Calls the meeting to order when the moderator cannot be present. Our town meeting warrant was posted properly by the constable on April 17, 2009, and I see a quorum in the auditorium. Due to the absence of the moderator, the first order of business is the election of the temporary moderators and assistant moderators. I have a letter here from Mr. Newman, our town moderator, dated May 2, 2009. I appoint Elizabeth Painter to serve as temporary moderator and assistant moderator for the ensuing year, dependent on an affirmative vote at the May 4, 2009 annual town meeting. I appoint Gary Horowitz to serve as temporary and assistant moderator for the ensuing year, dependent on an affirmative vote at the May 4, 2009 annual town meeting. Regards Edward E. Newman, moderator. And I did witness his signature. I would like to take, I will entertain a motion. Please read the motion, Mr. Duggan, into the record, please.
Ms. Moderator, I move that Elizabeth Painter and Gary Horowitz be elected to serve as temporary moderators and assistant moderators for the ensuing year.
A second? I hear a second. The motion was made in second, and to elect Elizabeth Painter and Gary Horowitz as our temporary moderator and assistant moderator. With your voter card, raise your hand. Those in favor? Thank you. Those opposed? I see no one opposed. That's wonderful. It's unanimous. You are declared the result that you are the temporary moderator and the assistant moderator. And I'm going to administer the oath. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as temporary moderators and assistant moderators in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Stowe, the Town Charter, and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? I turn the meeting over to Liz Painter, our lead temporary moderator.
I live at 106 West Acton Road, and I'm honored to be moderator this evening. Please rise for the invocation. Before we start the business of this annual town meeting, let us commence, as has long been our custom, by standing and remaining silent for a moment. Let each of us reflect on how, through this town meeting, we and our neighbors provide for our common good. As we deliberate and vote tonight, let us be reminded that the passions of the moment are not always the best guide for our conduct in the future, and that if sacrifice by a few is required, the sacrifice should only be where the common goal is worthy of the sacrifice. Let us approach each issue, no matter how divisive, with an open heart and with an open mind. And above all, let us each maintain a saving sense of humor, so that the debates at this town meeting will not be a source of division among us when our business here is finished. And now we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a few housekeeping items to take care of before we get to the articles and the warrant. First, I'd like to introduce our cast of characters. These are the people who you will be hearing from tonight, who will be either speaking to certain articles or answering questions. Ed Newman is our moderator. Gary Horowitz and I are the temporary moderator and assistant moderator for this evening. Linda Hathaway is our town clerk, and Kay Disman is the assistant town clerk. The Board of Selectmen seated in front of me, we have Tom Roggerio as chairman, Steve Duggan, Kathy Farrell, Jason Robart, Ellen Sturgis. Susan McLaughlin is the administrative assistant, Bill Wrigley, our town administrator, and John Witten, town council. Capitol Planning Committee, we have Jean Lynch as chair, Dave Arsenault, Kathy Farrell, Steve Jelenic, Ross Perry, and Marjorie Yanovitch as associate member. Community Preservation Committee, Bob Wilbur as chair, David Walrath, John Bolton, Mike Bush, Bob Larkin, Kathy Safara, Laura Spear, Linda Stokes, and an open position for council on aging. Deb Seith is their administrative assistant. Finance Committee, Charlie Kern is the chair, Dave Walrath, vice chair, Harry Hagopian is this, Jim Salve, Gary Burnclow, Anne DeLudie as associate, Christopher Sarno as associate, Beth Toby as secretary. The Historical Commission, Karen Gray, Wayne Fletcher, Susan McLaughlin, Joseph Mishley, and Linda Stokes. Our Planning Board, we have Laura Spear as chair, Kathleen Willis as vice chair, Ernie Dodd, Len Goldar, Stephen Quinn, Karen Callaher as planning coordinator, Bruce Fletcher as a voting associate. For our school district and community representatives, Neshoba Regional School District, Michael Wood is our superintendent, George King is the assistant superintendent, Brian Burke, Lynn Coletti, and David Horn are our school committee representatives. And we have Dr. Edward Boquillen as the superintendent for the Minuteman Regional School District, and Alice DeLuca as our representative. Our Spring Fest Committee, quite a large committee this year, which is great, Karen Callaher is our chair, Penny Cushing, Patty Heron, Ellen Sturgis, Murray Levine, Marge Alessio, Brian Burke, Dwight Sipler, Bruce Fletcher, and Nancy Arsenault. We also need to approve tonight our non-voter speakers. We have, these are people who may be addressing our meeting, who are not registered voters in the Town of Stowe. Our town council, John Witten, town employees, Bill Wrigley, Pat Perry, he's the administrator for our Conservation Commission, Mike McLaughlin, our fire chief, G. H. Gladhill for the Cemetery Committee. The Neshoba Regional School District, George King, who's the assistant superintendent, and for the Minuteman Regional High School District, Dr. Boquillen. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize an individual who passed away the last few months, who made a significant contribution to our town, Don Hyde. He was our town moderator from 1970 to 1995. He served in our Conservation Commission from 1967 to 1970. He served in our Town Report Committee from 1977 to 1981, and he was on our Zoting Board of Appeals from 1968 to 2009. And now I'd like to just go over a few of our meeting logistics. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We need to vote on the non-voter speakers. So if you could raise your voting card, all in favor of allowing those people to speak tonight, raise your card. All opposed? Appears unanimous. So for our meeting logistics, we have an emergency exit to my left and also straight back. The restrooms are in the hallway, the ladies are to the left and the men to the right. We have no scheduled breaks tonight for the town meeting. We're going to go straight through until about 10:30, and then we'll check and see how our progress is. This is school property, so that we ask that there's no food or drink in the auditorium. Please turn off all your cell phones and your electronic devices and pagers. And then I have a slide for Expectations and Etiquette, please. I would ask at all times, we have a respectful debate. Voter comments must be related to the motion being discussed. We have a lot of articles this evening, but I think if we stay focused on the article, we can get through the material quickly. Voters should ask new questions and try to avoid being repetitive. At 30-minute intervals, we will consider a motion to call the question. And approximately 10:30, we will check our progress to see if it's likely we'll finish this evening. I would also ask that when you come to the microphone, if you could please ask only one question, and each person who comes to the microphone is permitted three minutes at that time. We are being broadcast on Channel 9, and we have a wonderful Stowe TV group. Anne Van Tyne is our coordinator. Our TV crew tonight is Lou Halpern, Jerry Horn, Linda Stokes, and Mike Jordan. They're broadcasting this town meeting tonight, not live, it'll be broadcast later on in the week, the April 27 Candidates Night, and the May 12 Election Results, when they're available. If you check stowtv.org for the schedule. We have three important documents tonight for you to follow. The first and most important is your warrant. If you can keep this in front of you at all times, you'll be able to follow along as we go through each article. We also have a town meeting handbook that is at the voter check-in table in the hallway. It is a wonderful publication that explains everything we're doing tonight and some of the terms that you may not be familiar with. The third is the town meeting feedback form. If you have any comments, or questions, or criticisms of how we run town meeting, please fill out the form, and there are boxes that ask you to put them in at the end of the meeting. I'd like to, on behalf of Mr. Newman, ask if there are any first-time town meeting members tonight. Is anyone here for the first time? Great. He'll be thrilled. Our moderator is passionate about town meeting, and he was emphatic that I asked and make sure that there were new town meeting members tonight, so he'll be very happy, and I'll gladly report that back to him. I would like to thank our tellers and checkers for assisting us this evening, and I would like to now turn to the first motion by Ms. Farrell to waive the reading of the warrant.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the reading of the warrant and return of the constable thereon be waived, but made a part of the record of this meeting, and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter, instead of reading each article in its entirety.
Second? All in favor? All opposed? Appears unanimous. We'll now go to Article 1. Mr. Robart.
I'm all ready. I move that the members of the board of selectmen who are about to serve under law are being moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Appears unanimous. Article 2. Mr. Roggerio.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Roggerio, could you explain why we're taking no action on this article?
We're moving to take no action on this article at this time, because the reports have not been returned from the printer yet.
All in favor of no action on Article 2. All opposed? Appears unanimous. Article 3. Ms. Sturgis.
Madam Moderator, I move that the reports of the special committees be accepted as printed in the Town Report for 2008. No, we're moving no action, sorry. Ms. Moderator, I move no action on Article 3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to ask Mr. Robart to explain why we're taking no action on this article, because he sits on the land use task force, to which this article pertained.
We're taking no action on this article, because the final report is not yet complete. I'm actually going to share some information with you now about the findings of the land use task force, but the report will be completed over the next few weeks.
So we'll vote on the article to take no action, and then Mr. Robart's going to give us a brief informational summary of the land use task force's work to date. We will not take questions or debate that summary, it's just for information purposes only. So let's, all in favor of taking no action on Article 3? All opposed? Appears unanimous.
So what I want to do is give you a brief overview of the task force itself and the land use. As I just mentioned, reports might have been released over the next few weeks. There's an opportunity, and for anyone who has interest to know us, you can go post it, and we'll help you with that. So if you had an opportunity to join us, keep that, we'd be greatly appreciative.
How about that?
There you go.
Most people were happy they couldn't hear me. Okay, so the task force members, I won't read this to you. Our chair, the reason I'm doing this presentation tonight, our chair, Rick Lent, is traveling on business at the moment and could not be here to join us. But, as you see here, we have a cross-section of town residents representing different experiences and participation in town, boards in town government. We did that to ensure that we got a pretty good representative sample of views. Let's go to the next slide. So why was this, why was this group formed? Well, really, for two reasons. One, and I apologize for using a sports analogy, but, you know, there have been a few fumbles recently in town meetings over the last probably five years or so, as we've looked at decisions to purchase land. And some of it involved lack of clarity on the purpose of those acquisitions, some was rushing to meet the 120-day timeline relative to lands coming out of Chapter 61, and disagreement on whether there were town-owned parcels that might be used for specific purposes instead of acquiring new land. So we wanted to come up with a process and a document that really helped answer those questions. And then, secondly, it was, we don't really have a comprehensive and consistent process by which we were evaluating new parcels or the potential to acquire new parcels. And frankly speaking, as an individual member of the Board of Selectmen, at least for one more week, I can personally say that I think this lack of a comprehensive and consistent process has been something that really has been, has been sorely missed. So hopefully, coming out of this, we will have that moving forward. Quickly, what did we do? We did an inventory and analysis of town-owned land, whether that was land that had a conservation restriction or other types of restrictions, as well as land that is unrestricted. We have developed a process to guide the selectmen and other interested boards and parties relative to land coming out of 61. And we have taken a first stab at articulating priorities for land use as we move forward. There are a whole host of needs that the town has, and needs that various constituent groups can articulate in town, and for once and for all, we wanted to put a prioritized list together to help us make land use decisions as we move forward. So let's look at, let's look at land in Stowe. So very quickly, about 11,000 acres of land in Stowe, and it breaks down into these three general categories. About a third of it is developed land by that. Our homes, this building, Shopping Plaza, represents about a third, another third set aside for conservation, and finally, the rest being undeveloped land. Whether that land is privately held or publicly held, it is, it is not currently developed. So that's, that's just a quick breakdown is how the land looks in Stowe. Let's move now to protection status, and there's, there'll be more about this as we move forward. So unprotected land, this is either municipally owned or privately owned land, comes to the town, for town-owned land, in a variety of vehicles, as noted here, as well as the privately-owned land that is undeveloped. That's land that might be in Chapter 61, it may not be, and that land, again, is owned by individuals or institutions. That land, unprotected, it's free to be developed, obviously, within local permitting regulations, but there aren't currently any restrictions on that land. Moving over to the right side, we have protected or land in conservation. Again, this is land that is owned by the municipally-owned, owned by nonprofit organizations, state or federal lands, and this land is in conservation. Now, one of the things that frequently this body has struggled with is, can we use that land for another purpose? And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that as we go through, but that certainly is one of the things that the Land Use Task Force was adamant to look at. So moving to town-owned land, as we see about 150 acres of land that the town owns that is in unprotected status, again, the ways that we can, we've acquired that land. The task force really broke that down and looked at 48 parcels. Now, those parcels, some of those are, again, parcels that are already developed, this building being one of them, but we looked at 48 parcels and actually conducted 13 site visits. When I say we looked at, we actually got information from the assessors, we got information from the planning board, from the Board of Health, et cetera. We really reviewed the information that was already available to us, as well as conducted 13 site visits. Of those, of those site visits, we found about six parcels that may have the ability to be developed for small municipal uses. You know, whether, whether that is perhaps an affordable housing unit or two on a, on a small parcel of land, a playground, something like that. There were, there were six of those parcels. Two larger parcels, the west side of the Pompo land and the Kane property in Gleesendale, were two larger parcels that the task force looked at and actually went and worked with an independent engineer to help us understand what were the development possibilities of those two parcels of land. So as I mentioned, Pompo and the Kane, Pompo's about 11 acres, Kane's 28 acres or thereabouts. And really, what we found was that they're not appropriate for significant development. And in fact, really, the only development that could work there, given the characteristics of that land, really was passive recreation or sort of other non-structural municipal uses. So we're not going to build a new community center on these parcels, or new fire station or something along, along those lines. So the overall finding on unprotected town-owned land is really that there's limited opportunity. You know, we have 150 acres, but our ability to develop any of those parcels is relatively limited. So with that in mind, let's take a look at conservation land. Some of you may have attended a public here, or a public forum, that the Land Use Task Force held during the winter, and if so, you've certainly seen some of this information before. In addition to conducting our own review of conservation land and the ability to use conservation land for other purposes, we actually asked town council to provide an analysis of the, of the pertinent regulations and statutes to help us understand if indeed this was, was possible. And the outcome of both our review and town council's review is that, yes, it is possible, and I guess anything is possible, but it is extremely difficult and extremely time-consuming to go down this path. And why is that? It's for, really, for a couple of reasons. One, as listed here, there are multiple approvals that are needed if you want, needed if you want to take a parcel out of conservation and convert it to, to another use, and they're listed here, the Concom, town meeting, legislature, the other, other parts of the executive branch of government. I won't say it takes an act of God, but it's pretty close to getting a parcel out of, out of conservation. And then, secondly, this, the second point here, is that you'd have to demonstrate that there's no other feasible alternative. And if we go back to the first slide, where we show that 39% of land in the Town of Stowe is undeveloped, it would be difficult to make a viable argument that there are no other parcels of land that we might look at, given that 39% of the land in Stowe is, is undeveloped. And that would be something, making that argument would be something that the executive branch in particular would be very much interested in, in, prior to giving their approval for land to come out of conservation. So that's, the good news is, we have no town-owned land that's unprotected that we can use, and it would be very difficult to use conservation land. That's, I'm being somewhat facetious there. Let's look at Chapter 61. So as a slide here shows, Chapter 61, classification that gives a town the right of first refusal, refusal for land coming out of chapter, that the owners of those parcels have benefited from a reduced tax rate while they own the land, and have given the town this right of first refusal as a result of that. When we, the task force was first put together, the charter was actually for us to do a full assessment of each of the parcels in Chapter 61. And as we got together and thought about it, we thought, you know, there are, there are some real privacy issues with us doing that, that I'm sure just as everyone sitting in this room would not necessarily be happy if town, if a town board or town bodies just came and started tracing through your land and understanding, making an assessment of your land, and then publishing that information. We thought it was, was probably not prudent for the task force to do that. Instead, what we did do, however, was to put together a process to help the Board of Selectmen and other interested parties review parcels that are coming out of, out of Chapter 61. So as, again, I won't, I won't read all of these for you, but I think the important piece here is that third sub-bullet, of a standing study and evaluation group on call to evaluate when notice is received. As I mentioned earlier, 120 days, as we all know, is a short window of time during which the town has to make a decision whether it's going to exercise that right of first refusal. So what the task force has recommended to the board, and the board has accepted this recommendation, is that there is a standing committee, that the moment that notice comes to the town, this, this, this evaluation group is activated and really can get the, get the ball rolling. get the ball rolling. It's also now a process that is extremely transparent and provides opportunity for input for anyone who has information to share. Just as a point of reference, there are about a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven parcels in town that are currently in Chapter sixty-one. Okay, finally, looking at our, at the needs and priorities, as I mentioned at the beginning, the, the objective here was to develop a prioritized list to help guide land use decisions in the, in the future. We found two things as we started this. One, that the perspective that we came to this, or the prioritization was heavily dependent on the perspective that we used. So let me say a little bit more about that. If we decided, for example, that the perspective was, how do we maintain Stowe as it currently exists today, full stop? No, no other development in Stowe, no increase in number of residents, et cetera, it sent us down a certain path relative to prioritization. If we took the path of, we are going to absolutely move towards full build-out, and how do we prioritize land use decisions relative to a town of ten thousand, ten thousand residents, that takes us down, down a different decision path. So, what did we do? We actually took a medium road here and looked at, how do we prioritize, assuming that we want to preserve the general character of the town, but also recognizing that we will move towards, towards build-out? And certainly, any of the towns in, in the four ninety-five area that have attempted to stay status quo, that, that hasn't worked out particularly well. So, as we, as we put together this prioritized list, we did work with a number of other town boards and departments. We did look at all of the available data, whether that was the Open Space Committee, the Municipal Land Use Committee report, survey results from the Master Plan Survey that took place earlier this year. We, we looked at a, at a number of different data sources, as well as conducted interviews. This final point here about not intending to replace the master plan is important. The master plan, as, as we know, folks have been working diligently at that over the last, last little while, and we expect a presentation, I believe, in the fall of a completed master plan. This is to supplement that, this is not to replace, replace the master plan. Next slide, Mike. Quickly, we looked at a number of different uses, they are listed here in alphabetical order, and we recognize that this list may not incorporate all of the potential uses or all of the potential municipal land uses, but it does represent those most commonly seen in other, in discussions that we've had here in Stowe to date, as well as other towns with similar characteristics. So, what did we find for prioritization? I'm going to share this in sort of high, medium, and low, and again, these are done relative to the, from the perspective of how do we maintain the character as we move towards build-out. So the high priority land use needs really fall into these four areas, agricultural, affordable housing, a community center. We, we talked about a senior center, as well as multi-generational center, and for argument's sake here, have deemed it a community center, and open space. Now, obviously, some of these, some of these are, will be very dependent upon the parcel itself. Only a certain type of land can be used for agriculture. So, you know, that is somewhat self-limiting as we think about this moving forward. Affordable housing, community center have perhaps more similar land characteristic needs, and then open space really can be at, in any location in, in town. So, high priority needs around these, these four. As we look at medium priority, we see these four, municipal parking, town offices, well and septic, and, and a school. And remember, this again, is from the perspective of, as we move towards build-out. You know, we clearly have a school development process that is underway right now. This is not meant to suggest that this supplements or supplants, sorry, that process, but as we move towards build-out, these would be medium priorities for, for the town from our perspective. As this last bullet does suggest, these really will all be, the parcel size, cost, the characteristics of the parcel itself will influence whether any of these parcels are suitable for these uses. And then finally, low priority needs, and as the slide says, for now, library, recreation, public safety. We did go out and talk with representatives of, of the library, the Rec Commission, and others, as well as our public safety officials, and given what is happening right now, specifically as we're developing the, the snow parcel, as well as speaking with reps, representatives from the library and recreation, I'm sorry, representatives from library and public safety, who said that they actually could use their existing facilities with perhaps some expansion or renovations to existing facilities to support the needs as we move towards, towards build-out. So for now, we didn't see these as high priority needs. Our recommendations, just wrapping up here, really fall along a couple of lines. One is to maintain this long-range and systemic vision as we, as we move forward. Decisions, the, the task force has found that decisions, and unfortunately, I think this is something we have done in the past, but decisions that are based solely on the project at hand don't necessarily set us up for achieving maximum value to the town as we, as we move forward. So if we're considering this parcel only for this, this specific use and not putting it in the broader context of where is the town going in, in the long run, we may make decisions that, that may not be advantageous to us as we move forward. There certainly are also some large undeveloped, underdeveloped parcels of land in town that as we think about the, the future of the town and what, what might occur on some of those parcels, we, it's something that we really need to start thinking about now so that we are in a position to make decisions if and when those decisions become necessary. Finally, a couple of more specific recommendations. One is obviously to adhere to the process that has been adopted by the board relative to Chapter sixty-one. The second here is to create a dedicated fund. As you may know, parcels that come out of Chapter sixty-one, once they come out, there are back taxes that are, that are, that are paid on those parcels. They're, it's rollback or conveyance taxes. What we're recommending here, and other towns have done this, is that we create a fund to deposit those, those monies into that would be used then for future land acquisition needs as we move forward, so that as, as parcels come out and as the town generates revenue that it hadn't generated in the past, those funds are, are available. Just to put it in, in context for you, on a five million dollar parcel of land that has been in chapter for, say, fifteen years or so, we're talking about somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxes, of back taxes that would come to the town. Those dollars can be used, as, as other towns have done so, to, to purchase, make future land purchase decisions. And finally, again, I won't, I won't read all of these to you, but I will mention on the last one, we do need some formal and, and ongoing representation of the municipal needs and the strategic vision of the town as we're going through the development negotiations for developers working in town and, and those who are recommending or offering to give us perhaps land in, in lieu of, of payments or vice versa, that as we think about making those agreements with developers, that we are considering, actively considering the, the municipal needs at that time. So, very quickly, next steps, Land Use Task Force is going to complete the final report and present it to the Board of Selectmen within the next four to six weeks. Again, I'd encourage any of you to, to attend Land Use Task Force meetings as we, as we go forward over the next few weeks. And then finally, this presentation and the final report will be on the town website once it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robart, and thank you to the Land Use Task Force for all of their work. Before we turn to the Articles Four and Five, we would like to hear from the Finance Committee. Mr. Salvi is intending to present a brief overall summary of the town's financial condition. Mr. Salvi?
Much better. Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I'll try to keep this brief. In the next few minutes, we'd like to present a summary of the town's finances. I'll focus, obviously, on the fiscal two thousand and ten budget. I'll compare it to the fiscal two thousand and nine budget, and I'll focus on a few items, such as the capital planning items and the community preservation items. But we'll also try to give you a snapshot of the town's financial picture in the next several years. I will not be presenting the Finance Committee's recommendations on individual articles. We'll be presenting those as the individual articles come up. First, let's take a look. Despite the state's overall bleak financial picture, the town of Stowe's fiscal two thousand and ten budget balances without too much pain, and that is due largely to the hard work and dedication of the town administrator and the department heads. For the fourth year in a row, there was no need for an override to balance the budget. There's no new staff, though a few staff because of new duties are receiving upgrades. Contractual obligations are met, and by that I mean cost-of-living adjustments largely required by collective bargaining agreements. There is no borrowing. There is a limited use of stored assets, savings, for a capital item. No stored assets used for the operational budget. Let's take a slightly more detailed look at the revenues coming into the town. Overall, town revenue is projected to increase by two point six percent in fiscal two thousand and ten over fiscal two thousand and nine. Property tax continues to be our largest source of revenue, as it is in most communities. Now, that two point six percent includes within it a few downward trending items that I'd like to bring to your attention. First of all, the number four, property tax, includes an item called new growth. New growth are the taxes that are allowed to be levied on new construction. Well, in a downward economy, you have to project less new construction than in other years, and this budget projects two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in new growth compared to four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in fiscal oh nine. For the same basic reasons, local receipts are projected to be level or in the next several years to go down. Local receipts are a motor vehicle excise taxes. In bad economies, people can be expected to hold on to their cars a little bit longer. But the most important downward trend that I want to bring to your attention is state-local aid. Now, the numbers I have up there project state-local aid is reduced by eleven percent in fiscal two thousand and ten. But I'm including in there school-building assistance money, which is staying the same. If you take out school-building assistance money and take out all local aid to schools, state-local aid to the municipal side of our budget reduces by about twenty-four percent, and that reflects the current gloomy projections coming out of Beacon Hill. Let's see how our sources of revenue compare to each other. Clearly, property tax continues to be by far our largest source of revenue. You'll see state-local aid is that greenish slice near the top at about four point one percent. That's four point one percent compared to its higher figure last year, when it was about four point seven percent. Now, in most years, that would be something to complain about, that we get such little state-local aid. But this year, it's a good thing. This is why we can absorb an eleven percent cut or twenty-four percent, depending on how you count it, without feeling too much pain and without suffering the disastrous consequences that some of our neighbors are experiencing. So that's an overview of where our money is coming from. Let's look at where it's going. Overall growth in spending for fiscal two, for fiscal two thousand and ten is one point two percent, and there's a projected surplus of about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Now, the biggest break that we caught in doing the budget for fiscal two thousand and ten is that the budget for the Neshoba Regional School District is expected, well, will increase by only one point five four percent overall. Because of the way Neshoba does their allocations of assessments, that translates into an increase for Stowe's assessment of three point five percent, still a manageable number. You'll notice that the assessment for the Minuteman Regional Vocational School District actually goes down by quite a bit, and that's because the number of students that we send to Minuteman is going down. The municipal budget, and by that we mean everything else that town government provides, is expected to rise by about two point nine percent, roughly the same rate that our revenue is increasing. Capital items are increasing significantly, but those are big-ticket items that can go up or down quite a bit each year. This year, they're going up by quite a bit because there's a big-ticket item, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar ambulance. An item that continues to grow at a disturbing rate is what is called the tax recap items. These are assessments from the state or the county, the biggest of which is the assessment from the state-county, I'm sorry, from the county retirement system. They are projected to grow by five point six percent. I can't see the small numbers here, I can only see the big numbers. They are projected to grow by five point six percent. If you isolate the retirement system assessment, that is growing by a whopping eight point eight percent next year. This is something that we can't really do very much about, but these items are growing at a rate higher than our revenue is growing. Let's take a look at how our categories of spending relate to each other. The big blue slice there is education, and it represents sixty-two percent of every tax dollar that's spent. That is the Neshoba Regional Assessment and the Minuteman Assessment combined. The red slice, thank you, which represents public safety, that's police, fire, and building inspector. The green slice, which represents public works, highway and cemetery. The orange slice, which represents all the special articles on your warrant, the consent calendar, the community preservation articles, the capital articles. And the purple slice, that represents everything else in town government that provides services, that represents twenty-eight percent of your tax dollar. The other slices, the, the light blue slice represents those assessments that I just spoke about, three point six percent, and the, I'm not sure what to call it, the medium blue slice, thank you, represents debt service at about five point seven percent. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. Let me focus just for a second on a couple of particular items. In Article thirty-four, for the most part, you have capital projects proposed at this town meeting. They total about five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. I want to talk about where the money is coming from. Of that five hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and two thousand dollars is coming from amounts appropriated by prior town meetings that were not spent, that's being swept up and being made available for this town meeting to reappropriate. Two hundred thousand dollars is coming from free cash, that's one of the town's two savings accounts, and the remainder is coming from the tax levy within the Proposition Two and a Half tax levy limits. There was no borrowing projected for this year's capital items. Next slide, Mike. You also have a total of about fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars in projects proposed from the Community Preservation Fund, some of which may not be moved, and a hundred eighty thousand dollars proposed we put into the Community Preservation Committee's reserves. It's important to keep in mind that spending community preservation dollars does not directly affect your tax rate. The community preservation funds come from a three percent excise tax voted in by a prior town meeting and state funds that match that amount in part. That's an overview of your fiscal two thousand and ten budget. Let's just look briefly at the longer-range picture. Now, we wouldn't be the Finance Committee if we couldn't find some bad news somewhere, so here it is. This is a chart of existing principal and interest on our debt, and it looks pretty good. The trend is downward until about now, or fiscal twenty-eleven. The trend is downward until about now, or fiscal 2011, when it seems to level off at about $1 million for the foreseeable future. But that's our existing debt. Any new debt, and there is none proposed on this warrant, but any new debt would change the slope of that line potentially dramatically and quite quickly. Also, that debt that goes out to 2013 and 2014 at about the level of $1 million stays at about that level for quite a while. That's mainly two items, the construction of this building and the Flag Hill Conservation Land acquisition, I think in 1999 and 2000, and they stay at that level until about fiscal 2019 and fiscal 2020. Next slide. Good news is that the town is moving toward our informal target of saving, of having $1 million in savings in its two savings accounts, the stabilization fund and the free cash account. The stabilization fund, represented in red, is really the town's savings account. That's where town meeting votes to save some, to put some money into savings, and it takes 2/3 of a vote to take money out of it. Free cash is the account where unexpended balances of prior appropriations goes, or revenues that come in higher than anticipated go. As I said, we're moving toward our informal goal of $1 million. The bad news is that, I guess, when we made that informal goal, $1 million sounded like a lot of money. Now, it's about 1/22nd of our annual budget. The bottom line is this town really has to save some more money. A quick reminder, you set the tax rate at this town meeting, and you set it by setting the overall level of spending. That's because the overall level of spending has to equal the assessed value of property in the town, which is set by the assessors, times the tax rate. So when you set the overall spending, you set the tax rate. Now, what happens if your assessment goes down, which for many of us is not a hypothetical? Don't expect your tax rate to also go down, because this formula indicates it probably has to go up. If you had a year where the total overall spending was exactly the same as the prior year, and the assessed value went down, what would have to happen to that tax rate? It would have to go up to get the same amount of money for the town just to tread water financially. That doesn't mean anybody would necessarily be paying more taxes, but the tax rate itself would have to go up. The bottom line to remember is that you set the tax rate here at town by setting the level of overall spending. So, in summary, the fiscal 2010 budget is in pretty good shape, all things considered. An increase of 1.2% in overall spending, a 2.9% increase in spending for the municipal budget, a projected surplus of about $256,000 that should be able to absorb any additional cuts in state-local aid that haven't occurred and can't be anticipated. In the longer run, however, perhaps there are a few clouds on the horizon. Revenue may be trending downward. That net growth decline that I spoke about, the decline in state aid, the decline in local receipts, may one day be meeting an uptick in borrowing, whether it's for a school or for land or other increased expenses. Ms. Moderator, that concludes the FinCom's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Salvi. I would now ask that Mr. Sipler, Dwight Sipler, come forward and briefly discuss the ballot question that's on, will be on the election on May 12th. The reason we're taking this a little bit out of order at this point is because we're in a unique situation this year where there's no article that relates to the ballot question. So it's, there's one question, and Mr. Sipler's going to give us just a brief explanation of what it's about, and then we'll go straight to Article 4. Mr. Sipler?
Thank you. I'm Dwight Sipler. I'm on the Agricultural Commission. This question enables the town to eliminate the excise tax on agricultural equipment and animals. Excise taxes, everyone is probably familiar with them because they pay an excise tax on their car. The car has a certain value. You pay $25 per thousand on your car. A long time ago, in order to encourage agriculture, that rate was dropped to $5 per thousand for agricultural equipment and animals. As the agricultural environment has shrunk over the years, the amount of money that that brings into the town is less than $4,000. It's not a big deal for the town, and last time I talked to the workers in the assessor's office, they said that they had to do all that by hand. I guess it doesn't fit in their computer. So it probably costs that much to collect that tax. In 2008, the state legislature enabled towns to eliminate that tax by ballot. So we have put this question on the ballot in order to take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Sipler. We'll now turn to Article 4. Mr. Duggan?
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 11 of the general bylaws of a town personnel administration by deleting from Section 20H the existing salary schedules A, B, C, D, and E, and inserting in place thereof new schedules A, B, C, D, and E as printed in the warrant.
One second. Mr. Salvi from the Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Ms. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It updates the Personnel Bylaw wage schedule to be consistent with collectively bargained employees for all those who are not collectively bargained.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, if you could come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Judy Toop from Harvard Road. I believe that the schedule does not include the extra, like, $4,000 per employee that they get under Article 25 for education. Is that correct?
Mr. Wrigley?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. And so it isn't really a realistic picture of what the rates are for those positions in total. And I'd also like to know, in addition to the 3% cost of living, did everybody get a raise this year?
Mr. Wrigley?
The 3% cost of living represents the increase in salary for all employees, union and non-union. There are no other raises, per se, for employees. You have a step schedule, which is in the warrant, has that embedded in it, but that is it. The educational incentive, which is a special article and we'll speak to, I can identify the employees and the amount included, but it's only 15 out of 74 employees. So if you're looking at this, there's only 15 employees to include union contracts where that's effective out of the 74.
Thank you, Mr. Wrigley.
Gary Small, 107 Old Drive. In voting on the change of the schedules, does that then make this a set deal, that these cost of raise, cost of living raises will go into effect, rather than looking at individual raises as we go through the ballot today?
Mr. Wrigley?
The 3% is a cost of living allowance, and every employee in town has a cost of living allowance of 3% included in here. Yes, if you vote this schedule, that schedule reflects the 3%. In Article 5, the 3% is actually in the salary line item. These schedules also have been adjusted by the 3%.
Which means that if we elect not to incorporate this as a one-lump sum, we then have the right to say whether somebody will receive a raise this year or not based on the financial climate of the town and the taxes and the effect on people?
The voters in Article 5 can decide whether any individual salary amount or all of the salary amounts have the 3% or they don't. They currently have it in there.
All right, we're ready for the vote. All in favor of Article 4, Wages and Salary Schedules, raise your card. All opposed? Who can answer this? Article 5, the budget.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,213,118 as recommended by the town administrator and selectmen for items 1 through 75 inclusive, as printed in the warrant under the column entitled FY 2010 Budget, Town Admin/Selectmen Recommended. Each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the purposes designated and the same to be expended only for such purposes.
We have our slide for the budget. I just briefly want to explain to you how the budget is set forth in your warrant. If you look on page 14, the budget is, starts on page 14 and goes through page 26. You'll see six columns. The first column is the line item number. The second is the department seeking the amount of money. The third column is the actual budget for fiscal year 2009. The fourth column is the 2010 requested budget. The fifth column is the recommended budget by our town administrator and selectmen, and the last column is the Finance Committee recommendation on that budget. There are eight categories of line items. I'm going to read through the line items on each page. You may ask to hold a line item on that page. We will then go to the next page and do the same thing. When we reach the end of the budget on page 26, we will vote on all of the line items not held. We will then go back and vote each line item that's been held after we've clarified a point or answered a question. So at this point, if you can turn to page 14 of your warrant, the first category is general government, and on page 14, there's line items number 1 and 2. So as I go through these line items, if you'd like to hold a line, just state in a loud voice, "Hold," and we will note that it's been held. So page 14, general government lines 1 and 2. Page 15, general government lines 3 through 9. Page 16, general government lines 10 through 18. Did I hear a "hold"? Okay, which line? So line 1 on page 14? Okay, line item number 3, okay. All right. So page 15, line items number 3 and 5 are held. Page 16, line 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. So line 18 on page 16 is held. Line 10, 13, 14, and 16. Page 17. Line 19, line 20, line 21, line 22, line 23, line 24, line 25. Any on that page? Information and Technology Advisory Committee?
Line 24.
Line 24. Page 18. Line 26, line 27. 26. Line 26 is held. Line 28, line 29, line 30, line 31. So only line 26 on page 18 is held. Page 19, line 32. That's the end of the general government section of the budget. The next section is public safety. It begins on line 33, line 34, line 35. Hold on 34. And 35. Line 36, line 37. Line 38. Page 20. Line 39, line 40. Line 41. Did I hear a "hold"? Line 40 was held. That's the end of the public safety. The next is public works and facilities. Lines 42 through 49. So we'll take line 42, line 43. That was line 43 to hold? Line 44, line 45. Page 21. Line 46, line 47, line 48. Line 49. So there's a "hold" on line 48. Now we go into human services, lines 50 to 57. Page 21, there's line 50. Page 22, line 51, line 52, line 53, line 54, line 55, line 56, line 57. So no holds on page 22. Page 23. This begins the cultural and recreation budget, lines 58 through 67. Line 58, line 59, line 60, line 61, line 62, line 63, line 64. So no holds on page 23. Page 24, line 65, line 66, line 67. We now begin the townwide expenses, line 68 through 70. Line 68, line 69, line 70. No holds on page 24. Page 25, education, lines 71 and 72. 71, 72. Debt service are line 73 through 75. 73, 74, 75. Hold 72. So we'll now vote on all of the non-held items, and then we'll go back and discuss each item that's been held and answer questions. So all those in... item that's been held and answer questions. So all those in favor? I'm gonna go ahead and double-check and read all the ones that are held so that when we take our vote, we're accurate, so we don't have to do it again. So lines three, five, ten, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, twenty-four, twenty-six. Lines thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-seven, and forty. Lines forty-three and forty-eight. And then seventy-two. So all in favor of the non-held items, please raise your voter card. All opposed? That's unanimous. So we'll go back and start with line number three. If the voter could come forward and ask a question?
Very small, 107 Little Drive. I will probably be asking the same question a lot of them, but considering the current fiscal, fiscal conditions of both the private citizens of Stowe as well as the Town of Stowe itself, the question is why it is necessary to have an increase in the salary at this time instead of holding the salary steady-state for the next fiscal year and reconsidering when things get better?
Ms. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gere.
The best I can do to answer this question, as presented by the Finance Committee, the budget has been basically level-funded, level-service. Most of the credit for that goes to the Town Administrator, Mr. Wrigley. The people that are receiving these wages, it's a feeling of the Board that they have earned these. We've still been able to cut in other areas that they should be receiving their wages rather than cutting them and saving them for a future day. We think we've brought in a very responsible budget to the town, in that the people that work here for the town have been the largest instruments in doing that.
Are there any other questions or comments on line three? All in favor of line three, as printed in the warrant, please raise your voter card. All opposed? Almost unanimous except for two votes. Line number five. Do you have a question on that one?
Do I have to say my name and address every time, or can I just hold up a photograph and say it's me again? This is, this is not personal, but I would, and I can't take a vote and ask how many people here are affected by what's going on. There are a significant number of people who are either out of work, fear of being out of work, in trouble with their homes. The people who work for this town oftentimes are people who live in this town, and one reason why I know I moved here was because it's a community. The times that are troubled are the times when the real connections in the community come through. I'm sorry. I said the times of trouble are when the connections in the community really come through. I mean, no offense to a Town Administrator, obviously works hard in his office, but I think that, whoa, sorry. I, I think that you're looking at $104,000, $104,000 as a salary last year plus change, and now going up another $3,000, $3,100 more for the same job this year at a time when many people that are being served are looking at making less money, having less available to them, cutting back on child support, pinching pennies with food, possibly losing their homes. Again, I want to say that as people working for the town who have jobs, who are steady-funded, who are not at any risk of losing it, that it would be fiscally responsible, and I feel that it would be an appropriate reaction to the times, to forego the raises this year as a sign that they understand that not everybody has that latitude of working for the government. Thank you.
This, this particular one, Town Administrator's Salary, is something I think that I hold quite dear. Mr. Wrigley attained a 3.8 out of 4.0 on his merit rating this year from the Board of Selectmen. I think every selectman on the Board, the one high point that he got was on budgeting. There were other areas that points were taken off, but the one thing was budgeting. I think it's through his time, through his knowledge, through his ability, that we've been able to bring in a budget that is basically level-funded and level-services in these tough times. As Mr. Salvi pointed out, that if you really look at the town, we've taken a hit of about twenty, over twenty percent in local aid, yet Mr. Wrigley has found ways to make the budget still come out level-funded with actually a surplus. So I think we as a Board, we all live in town, many of us have children that we have to send to college, that type of thing. We all have to work. Our jobs are all in jeopardy. The statement that these people that work for the town's jobs are not in jeopardy is really not an accurate statement, because their jobs can be in jeopardy just the same way as anyone in the private sector. I think that you need to look at, this is not the federal government, this is not the state government, this is the town government, that these are people that live here, work here, I shouldn't say work here, but live here. They do their business here, they do their shopping here. They look closely at it. So I think that when someone wants to say that their jobs aren't in jeopardy, there's been years, not in the recent past, that we've had to lay off town employees or we've had to cut hours.
Please, if you have a comment or question, you need to come to the microphone.
Maureen Crawford, Harvard Road. I would just like to reiterate that I'm-
Come closer. Okay, that's better.
Maureen Crawford, Harvard Road. I would just like to, Ms. Moderator, agree with the previous speakers. I personally, in my company, none of us got salary increases. We're all on salary freezes, as well as we lost our 401K benefit from work. It's nothing against anybody personally, but I would say most people in today's economy is really feeling the pinch, and it, nothing against anybody in the community in running the company, I mean, the town, but in some ways, it, it does feel like a slap in the face. Why should they get a raise when we're not?
Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
I would, I would just like to comment. I would echo the comments that our chairman made about the value of the experience of the existing employees that we have in town and, and the return that we get from the work that they do and their professionalism and expertise. I find it a little troubling here in the final hour that we're throwing darts at a budget that has been reviewed thoroughly for months now in a very transparent way with public hearings and public meetings, and for us to just sort of pick and choose which one of these we want to cut because times are tough. I would agree with the rest of my Board that has voted in, in support of this budget, that these cost of living increases, and frankly, it costs a lot to live in Stowe, are, are well justified.
Mr. Perry?
Ross Perry, Fourth Circuit Drive. I think we should keep in perspective that this 3% raise that may seem high when some of us are having freezes or cuts is also what the public employees got when the private sector was seeing 5% and 10% raises. So I don't think it's fair to penalize them when we have a budget that we can afford, when you realize that we really don't reward the public employees when the private sector is also doing well. Thank you.
Can we recognize at the other microphone?
Thank you. I'm Ann DeLudie. I'm at 51 Birch Hill Road. I'm speaking as a private citizen now. Each of these raises amounts to about $3,000 a year, next to nothing up to line sixteen. The total is $17,000, which is about $2 per person in the town. I think this is a whole lot of time taken over, a very petty amount of money.
I wanted to address something. This is not taking shots at anybody, and it's also not bringing something up to nitpick, and whether it be $17,000 or $170,000. The point that I was trying to make for myself, having been part of a layoff and dealing with raising my child here now and attempting to find new employment, is that every penny counts. And as members of the community, as all of us that live here have pinched pennies and tried to make ends meet, what I'm putting out there is a request to the town that one can live on $35,000, one can live on $38,000, one can live on $104,000, and one can live on $107,000. The fact is, is that the act of giving the money back to the town for one year, to take that onus off the tax structure that affects us, as that chart up there showed, that if we want to affect our tax rate, we only have three options to change, and one of them is how much do we put out each year? And every little bit helps. So if someone is working for the town, whether it be a citizen who comes up to the microphone or someone sitting behind the bench there now, giving a little bit sometimes means a whole lot more than just a dollar amount. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Robert Gorman, Tuffrey Lane. After reading in the paper that our town turned in a balanced budget when I know a lot of other towns are doing much worse, I think we're actually getting a bargain with our Town Administrator, and I fear what would happen without all the hard work that he would have done, and I think it would cost us a lot more than this raise.
Mrs. Lynch?
Jean Lynch, West Acton Road. I think if you don't include everyone who works for the Town of Stowe, including the schools, you can't just cut some people. So it's everybody or nobody, and this doesn't cover everybody, all of these articles. Therefore, I don't think it should be supported. It should, this kind of thing should have been done months ago, and it certainly was addressed by the people who did the budget, and if the public didn't like it, they should have come forward then.
Seeing no more questions or debate on line item five. All in favor, on line item five, as printed in the warrant, all opposed? Clear majority. We go to line ten. This is page sixteen. Yes, if you could state your name and address, please.
Name is Robert Toop, 82 Harvard Road. A 3% cost of living increase is something that I don't want to argue about because there are good and bad arguments that we've heard already. But my concern, and it applies to this particular line item, is that some of these salary provisions in the budget are far more than 3%. And the only way that it could have come out with a levelly-funded budget with no loss in services is to take money away from some other things that are not salary expenses. And that's what concerns me. In the long run, this, we'll have to pay for this. In the long run, we're trying to keep, give people raises that are more than 3%, but we're spending more money on, on wages, like for example, the Conservation Commission has a very high expense for salaries and wages. I don't know what that is, but the bottom line is we're spending way more than 3% increase. And if we have a levelly-funded budget, the only possible compensation for that is to take away money from other things, which I think in the long run are gonna hurt us. And that's what I don't like. One other comment. There might have been public meetings about this, but this is where the rubber meets the road, and all of us have a right to speak, and we should not hear things about how we should have come to some meeting in order not to have an argument about it. Now is the place to talk about it.
Mr. Wrigley?
With respect to line item ten, and this is true of several others within the budget, step increases were due to the Town Accountant, which is what accounts for the increase beyond 3%. Personally speaking, we have a CPA that is giving us many more hours, and if you work the rate in and look at what CPAs are getting nowadays, I will tell you this, and I'm a fiscally conservative person, we're getting abundantly more than we're paying for. With respect to personnel, and I've been here seventeen years, it's, I'll reiterate what's said by the Board, our most valuable assets in this town, and I've worked in the private sector and engineering firms, I've taught college, are our people here. They've sacrificed over the years. Just to give you an example, from 2003 to 2009, this current year, with regard to personnel, and this is what we're talking about, personnel, what they're worth, what we pay, we've averaged less than one-half of one full employee a year increase in staff in six years. I'll match that against most in the private sector. I'll certainly match it against the state, which hired 3,000 employees in the last two years. We have no long-term contracts locking this for cost of living. We may be the only town that has annual reopeners for all wages, including my own. No union contract locks us in, which allows us from year to year to make adjustments, and that's how we make up for some of these other differences. There are structural impediments that other people face in the private and public sector that we don't face because of the due diligence we do. And I would tell you this, the employees in Stowe, bar none, have always been more than willing to sacrifice their own wages and other things as the service demands go up. If you look at the structural rate increase that we're facing, I would compare it to most, and all I would say to you is that I really believe there's no exception to this, and back to Jean's point, if you want to take the cost of living away, take it from all of us, but don't just decide that you'd like to take it from some and not the others.
Mr. Robart?
I, I certainly can, can understand and appreciate the sentiments that have been expressed. It certainly is a, you know, these are unprecedented economic times, and, and everyone is certainly feeling the effects of that, some more so than others. And having sat in a meeting at work today where we voted to make some very difficult decisions relative to compensation and staffing, it is painfully clear. Having said that, I will say that it was the collective judgment of this Board that this was the most prudent budget to bring before town meeting. And we did that in thinking about the budget in its entirety, not just in, in one line item. Is there a, a particular line item in this budget that I may agree with or disagree with more so? Sure. But in its entirety, I firmly believe that this is a budget that best represents the needs and interests of the Town of Stowe, and I would encourage us to support this budget in its entirety.
Seeing no further questions or comments. All in favor of line item ten, as printed in the warrant. All opposed? It's unanimous. Line item thirteen. Seeing no questions or comments. All in favor of line item thirteen, as printed in the warrant. All opposed? See one opposition, so it's unanimous. Line item fourteen. Seeing no questions or comments. All in favor of line item fourteen? All opposed? Clear unanimous. Line item sixteen. Seeing no questions or comments. All in favor of line item sixteen? As printed in the warrant, all opposed? Clear majority. Line item twenty-four on page seventeen.
John Everly from Indian Ridge Road. I just wanted confirmation of what made up the increase in line twenty-four?
Mr. Wrigley?
We probably shouldn't use those. It's a diversion tactic, actually, if you're looking that way down the ground. This represents a reclassification within the Conservation Commission, the- This represents a reclassification within the Conservation Commission, the Administrative Assistant to Planet, to Conservation Coordinator. In fact, it was something I supported a year ago, but did not put the money to it without the proper backup, and they provided it all to me.
Seeing no further question or comment on line twenty-four. All in favor of line twenty-four is printed in the warrant? All opposed? Line item number twenty-six on page eighteen. Seeing no questions or comments on this line item. All in favor of line item twenty-six is printed in the warrant? All opposed? It's unanimous. Line item thirty-four on page nineteen. Seeing no questions or comments. All in favor of line item thirty-four is printed in the warrant? All opposed? It's unanimous. Line item thirty-five. Seeing no questions or comments on line item thirty-five. All those in favor of line item thirty-five is printed in the warrant? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Line item thirty-seven. Seeing no questions or comments on line item thirty-seven. All in favor of line item thirty-seven is printed in the warrant? All opposed? It's unanimous. Line item forty on page twenty. Seeing no questions or comments on line item forty. All in favor of line item forty is printed in the warrant? All opposed? It's unanimous. Line item forty-three. Seeing no questions or comments. All in favor of line item forty-three is printed in the warrant? All opposed? It's unanimous. Line item forty-eight on page twenty-one. Seeing no questions or comments. All in favor of line item twenty, forty-eight is printed in the warrant? All opposed? We go all the way to line seventy-two on page twenty-five. Page twenty-five, line seventy-two.
This is John Everly from Indian Ridge Road. My question is more of a, just a typo or something. In the previous slide that was shown, it showed seven hundred and fifty thousand. Now it shows eight hundred. I just want a confirmation of which is true.
I won't use the word "true." I think the superintendent is here from Minuteman and can speak to this. The Minuteman Voc Tech assessment for FY two thousand and ten has been and remains fluid. I've been in contact three or four times. The latest figure I had, I put seven fifty in, gone down from eight hundred, and I think he may have a, a more accurate figure tonight or not, and he could give it to you. I stated in my budget report that it was coming down, and I expected in the end that what was certified by the state budget would be somewhat less than this even at seven fifty, but I used a plug number of seven fifty.
So the budget has now been completely voted. Did you want to speak, Dr. Boquillen?
Certainly.
Certainly, yes.
Mr. Wrigley is correct. Ed Boquillen, Lincoln, Mass. The moderator, Ms. Moderator, Mr. Wrigley is correct in that our budget assessments are still estimated assessments for all sixteen towns. Until we have a final state budget and other factors related to the municipal growth factors are known, we're able to provide estimates. And I think the town administrator is wise to, we discussed a number of one or two percent above what our current estimated one is, just a plan for contingencies. So that seven fifty would be a maximum amount at this point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Rogario?
I'd just like to mention one thing about the new superintendent at Minuteman this year. We did get invitation, Board of Selectmen, to come over and visit the school. And I hadn't been to the school in quite some time. I think that a number, I think there were three of us that went on the tour. It was a very comprehensive tour. I can say that vocational education has changed quite a bit since it was when I went to high school. But I see a very interactive partnership now between the towns and the Minuteman. So it was, it was very, I think, very beneficial to the board to see what the things are that are happening at Minuteman. So I'd like to thank him at that time, and I think that it'll show up in the future needs that he has requests for.
And just to be clear, on line item number seventy-two, the amount, the dollar amount that we voted for was eight hundred thousand dollars. We didn't vote yet? Okay. That's the number, eight hundred thousand dollars. Is that right, Dr. Boquillen? Mr. Wrigley?
That is the amount appearing in the warrant. The seven fifty as a plug number could be used. My viewpoint is this, to leave it right where it is. We don't know what it's going to be when it is. Whatever we voted, we've just reserved the opportunity to raise taxes at that amount, but we won't if we don't need to.
Okay. So all in favor of line item seventy-two is printed in the warrant? All opposed? It's unanimous. We've now voted on all the line items that were held for Article Five. I have a few brief announcements before we go to the consent calendar. And the first one is that this Saturday, May ninth, we have our first town-wide cleanup day. If you would go to the Stowe Plaza in the Lower Common by Papagino's, you'll see a table set up where they'll give you free yellow trash bags and gloves. Simply go out to your front door and clean up everything in front of your house and your neighbor's houses, and the Stowe Highway Department will then pick up the bags on the roadside on Monday, May eleventh. We also have Spring Fest coming up, and Ellen Stur just wanted to just make a brief announcement about what we have planned. If you look inside your town warrant, the schedule for Spring Fest is printed right there.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just want to remind everybody, I'm now on the Spring Fest Committee. We've had a lot of fun planning some new activities this year, and we want you to think about coming if you haven't come in the past. Starts on May fifteenth, Friday night, we'll have the Ice Cream Social at Center School Gym. And then following that, there'll be a silent movie at Town Hall. It's free, sponsored by the Lions and the Historic Commission, featuring a live piano player and a Buster Keaton movie. On Saturday, we will be having the Grand Parade again. One of the new features is the new Black Eagle Jazz Band, which includes some members from here in Stowe, will be playing during the parade, and then after the parade at Center School is a continued concert. Should be really fun. If you haven't seen Black Eagle, they're enormously fun to watch, great sort of Dixieland Blues. I also, we're having a history tour. If you've read the column in the Stowe Independent over the last year, the three hundred and twenty-five facts about Stowe, they'll be doing, the History Commission, no, Historic Commission is sponsoring a trolley tour. You have to buy your tickets in advance, and there's information from the town website. Going around town, hosted by the gentleman who's been writing all those fun facts about the histories of Stowe. It's about a two-hour trolley ride, starts at two o'clock from Randall Library, but please set, buy tickets in advance so they know that you're coming and we have enough room on the trolley. The other new event we're doing this year is Cartoon Night on Saturday night. We decided to, to take a break from the dance that we've been doing at the Highway Barn, and instead, for, for those of you who have missed your chance to see Warner Brothers cartoons, we're gonna set up in a tent on Center School fields, a series of short movie, short cartoon movies, along with free popcorn donated by the Lions and some other things. So it should be really fun, and we're hoping for a nice evening out. And then on Sunday, we have the Annual Run for the Woods, sponsored by the Stowe Conservation Trust, and the Sounds of Stowe Concert at four o'clock in the afternoon. Again, the new item on Sunday is dog training and trials, not only a demonstration, but you can bring your own dog on a leash, and they will help you walk through some of the activities, and it should be a fun afternoon. That's gonna be at Center following the race, I think at eleven-thirty. As Ms. Moderator said, it's printed in the warrant. The, the schedule's still being updated. Hopefully you picked up a handout when you came in. Check out our website, stowspringfest.com. That'll take you to the updated schedule, which we are still changing almost daily and probably will be right up until next week. So I hope to see you at Spring Fest.
We also have a, the Stowe Energy Working Group is partnering with the Mass Municipal Association to host a free home energy savings seminar on Wednesday, May twentieth, from seven to nine PM at the Stowe Town Hall. Attend this introduction to home energy savings workshop, and you'll learn hands-on tips for reducing your energy use expenses, expenses and carbon emissions. Refreshments will be provided at that meeting. We also have the Annual Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May twenty-eighth. It starts at two o'clock. We also would like to ask people to look at the back cover of your warrant. There's an emergency assistance form that is being sent townwide to identify residents who might need special assistance in an emergency. If you could fill this out, if you haven't already, and drop it off to the Stowe Fire Department or mail it in, and they will keep that information confidentially for you. And finally, I just want to recognize our retiring town officials and committee members before we return back to our warrant articles. We have Kate Hogan on the Council of Aging, and the Community Preservation Committee is retiring. David Horn on the Neshoba Regional School District. Greg Jones on the Affordable Housing Partnership. Jean Lynch on the Open Space Committee. John Mackey, Historical Commission. Pierre O'Connor, Randall Library Trustee. Ted Perry, Land Use Task Force. Jason Robart, Board of Selectmen. Trish Suddles, Affordable Housing Partnership. Deb Woods, Spring Fest Committee. We'd also like to recognize Pat Walrath, who was our State Representative after twenty-four years, representing Stowe, Bolton, Maynard and Hudson. And we have four retiring teachers. Joan Fallon from Neshoba. Barbara Scavone from Neshoba. Brad George from Center and Hayle. And David Zina from Center. We now have a motion to take Article Number Forty-Six out of order. Dr. Boquillen has six town meetings he's supposed to be at tonight, and he's asked us to take this Minuteman Regionalization Fund a little bit quicker so he can attend some of his other meetings. Mr. Robart?
Ms. Moderator, I move to take Article Forty-Six, Minuteman Regional Stabilization Fund, out of order and act on it after Article Five and before the consent calendar.
All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous?
Ms. Moderator, I move at the town vote to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund by the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District, beginning July first, two thousand and nine, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen-G, one-half.
The Finance Committee. Christopher Sarno, do you have a recommendation?
Ms. Moderator? The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. I think it's important to point out that we're not appropriating any money to the stabilization fund. It only establishes it. It's, I think it's also important to point out that Minuteman is a, a unique regional school district in that it has to serve sixteen member towns, and it's also very capital intensive. There's a lot of machinery, equipment, and a big reliance on the facilities there. We think the establishment of the, of the stabilization fund in this case is a prudent measure.
Thank you. Dr. Boquillen, would you like to make a presentation at this time? No? Okay.
Given your time constraints and your objectives, I'll waive my time.
Thank you. All in favor of Article Forty-Six? All opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. We now go to our consent calendar. And I'd like to first explain how the consent calendar works. This is on page fifty-one of the warrant. There's a detailed explanation. You can follow along. These articles pertain to routine, non-controversial and predictable matters that recur each year. To expedite our meeting, we vote on these articles as a group by a single main motion. You, as a voter, may ask to hold one of these articles by stating "hold" in a nice loud voice so I can hear you, and that article will then be dropped from the consent calendar. After I read all of the articles and their titles, and then the dropped numbers have been set aside, we then take a vote on that group of articles that remain. We then go back and address each article that's been held separately to answer questions. I, as moderator, am holding Article Number Thirty-One because I sit on the Agricultural Commission and have a conflict with that particular article. So Gary Horowitz will come up and take over for Article Thirty-One on my behalf. So I think if we now go to our motion...
Ms. Moderator, I move at the annual meeting to take the following articles out of order in the warrant and take, and take action on Articles Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Eight, Twenty-Nine, Thirty, Thirty-Two, and Thirty-Three, as said motions are printed in the consent calendar, a copy of which has been provided to the voters at this meeting, without debate on any such articles, and provided that upon the request of any voter that during this meeting made before the vote is taken on the motion, an article shall be dropped from the consent calendar and should be acted upon in the ordinary course and order of business at the town meeting.
Finance Committee. Mr. Walrath, did you have a recommendation?
Madam Moderator, as printed in the warrant on all of those articles, the Finance Committee has recommended in favor of them.
Thank you. So I will now read through the article numbers and titles. If you want to hold one of the articles, please state "hold" in a loud voice. Article Number Six, Reserve Fund. Article Number Seven, Tax Title Proceedings. Article Number Eight, Audit of Financial Records. Article Number Nine, Revolving Fund Inspection Fees. Article Number Ten, Revolving Fund Advanced Life Support. Article Eleven, Transfer to Conservation Fund. There is a "hold" on Article Eleven? Article Twelve, Addition to Conservation Fund. Article Thirteen, Transfer from Wetlands Protection Fund. So "hold" on Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen, Update of Property Valuations. Article Fifteen, Town Records Binding and Repair. Article Sixteen, Highway Road Machinery and Private Ways. Article Seventeen, Highway Road Construction. Article Eighteen, Safe Drinking Water. Article Nineteen, Household Hazardous Waste Collection. Article Twenty, Municipal Solid Waste Disposal. Article Twenty-One, Medical Reserve Corps. Article Twenty-Two, Stowe Cultural Council. Article Twenty-Three, Selectmen's Engineering Consulting Expenses. Article Twenty-Four, Planning Board Engineering Consulting and Master Plan Expenses. Article Twenty-Five, Employee Educational Incentive Program. Article Twenty-Six, Legal Services. Article Twenty-Seven, Police Officer and Firefighter Medical Payments. Article Twenty-Eight, Construction and Maintenance of Waterholes for Firefighting Operations. Article Twenty-Nine, Weights and Measures Testing... Article 29, Waits and Measures Testing. Article 30, Swift Reach 911 Notification System. Article 32, Community Preservation Expenses. Article 33, Community Preservation Reserves. So I have as the only held articles 11 and 13. And 31 on my behalf. So we'll vote on all of the articles that were not held. All those in favor of the articles not held on the consent calendar, please raise your card. All opposed? So it's unanimous. So we go to Article 11.
Madam Moderator, Kathy Sperra, 583 Great Road and member of the Conservation Commission. Apologies for holding 13 and 11. We had different numbers that I think you had been given as an amendment to those, so I just wanted to make sure we voted the correct numbers.
Thank you.
Article 11 should be $1,645 and no cents.
Are there any other questions on Article 11? So it's 1,645 is the amount. All in favor of Article 11? All opposed? So it's unanimous. Article 13?
Kathy Sperrigan for the Conservation Commission. The sum in Article 13 should be $2,827.50.
So all in favor of voting Article 13, $2,827.50. All opposed? So that's unanimous. So I will now step down as Mr. Horowitz will take Article 31 and the capital planning articles.
We can do it. We're just having a little housekeeping discussion up here. And the town clerk, who opened the meeting and is the person who records everything, wants us to do this officially and well, so she's asked that on the consent calendar articles that were held, that the article be moved in its entirety with the correct number. So can we go back for the record and deal with Article 11? And who among the selectmen is going to make the motion? And does the chairman have the right dollar amount? Because we can supply it to him. He's facing the other way. Tom.
Getting help from everybody tonight. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Conservation Land Maintenance Account to the Conservation Fund, the sum of $1,645 expended by the Conservation Commission.
All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Article 13?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Wetlands Protection Fund, the sum of $2,827.50, as additional appropriation to the Conservation Commission to be expended by the Conservation Commission in performing its duties under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Wetlands Protection Bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That too passes unanimously. The town clerk thanks all of us. Okay, we can now move on to the last of the consent calendar articles that was held. That's Article 31. I have, who is gonna? Tom again. Mr. Rogero.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $450 to be added to any balance remaining as additional appropriation to the agricultural expense account to be expended by the Agricultural Commission for the purpose of agricultural preservation activities.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Okay, we can now move on to the next order of business, which is Article 34. And we will be, this is a series of capital budget items, so we proceed a little differently here. The first item of business is to buy these, ask permission to divide them so that we can consider them individually. Ms. Sturgis?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town discuss the items of this article individually and vote upon each separately as to the amount to be appropriated for each item as set forth in separate motions proposed.
All those in, is there any discussion on the separating the question? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of dividing the question? All those opposed? That passes unanimously. I think we are going to begin with a capital overview. Mr. Jelenik, I think?
Jelenik.
Jelenik. Let me try one more time. Don't mess up his name. It was my problem.
Thank you, Mr. Kupinski. First of all, I'd like to recognize the other members of the committee. I know we did this earlier in the evening, but, and I won't ask them to stand up, but it's a pleasure working with such a dedicated group as Jean, Dave, Kathy, Ross, and mine. Folks probably know this, but I'll remind you anyway. Our Capital Planning Committee is charged with considering and making recommendations to you, town meeting, about capital projects. And capital projects are defined in our town bylaws as any land acquisition or any expenditure by the town in excess of $10,000 with a useful life of three or more years. As a committee, we view our mission as to help you, the town, make wise capital investments. And we accomplish this by conducting reviews of each department's request that they come forward every year. And we look at each request very carefully. We ask questions about the necessity of the expenditure. We ask how the dollar value of a particular project has been established. This year, we asked a question, can you live without this request? Sometimes we ask folks to go back and sharpen their pencils, and you'll hear more about how a couple of folks, a couple of departments have done that in a few minutes. And another thing we ask folks to do is, we encourage them to develop five-year spending plans so that you, the voters, can tell what you're going to see next year and in a few years also down the road. Okay, next one. What we have here is a summary of what the departments requested in the way of capital requests for fiscal year 2010. So, there we go. We've got three columns. The first column is what I told you folks about last year, which is what we expected to see in the way of capital requests for this year. The second column is what's in the warrant, and the third column represents what we, as a committee, recommend. So last year about this time, we were looking at a number of about $1 million in terms of capital requests. And so we asked folks, I think what happened is the town kind of got the message that the economy is in bad shape, and a number of departments have deferred some of their expenditures that they expected to make this year into other years. For instance, you'd notice that the school district was originally thinking they were going to be spending upwards of half a million dollars. Now they're coming to you and asking for, in the warrant, $75,000. The difference there is there were some modular classrooms that were, have been, we thought were going to be needed and are no longer going to be requested this year. There were some improvements to some heating, ventilation, air conditioning equipment that's not going to be done this year. And also, the Recreation Department and the Board of Health have deferred their requests for this year to another year. And the Police Department was originally going to come forward with some changes to the dispatch area. That's going to be deferred to another year. And I would also like to point out that Chief Trefley is looking at another way to pay for that rather than coming before town meeting looking for that money. There's a couple of differences between what's in the warrant and what we've recommended. Those are the numbers in italics that affect the Building Department and the School District. You're going to hear more about that in a couple of minutes. I'd say the takeaway from this slide is that the town asks the departments to be careful, to be tightening their belts this year, and I think we can be satisfied that they did. And finally, there's a lot of numbers on this slide. I think, I don't know, Jim, did I get more numbers on my slide than you got on yours? I think probably I did. This is what we would consider to be a snapshot of what the town is looking for spending in the next five years. This is the expected departmental request based on the five-year plans that we've received to date. I should point out that these numbers could and probably will change in the years ahead, but this is what we have in the way of current thinking in terms of departmental plans that have been submitted. So this is, this is this year's requests. I should point out that this year's request is a little bit more money than last year's. Depending on how we do the accounting, you had $375,000. I had $490 approved by the town. I don't know whether the difference was the fire truck or how it was accounted, whatever. We're talking about the same amount of money here. Actually, a little bit more, but we can, Jim and I can fight about that later. I will say that these numbers are more or less consistent with what we, as a town, spent as the average over the past five years. It works out to something like $550,000 is what we've spent on average for capital requests for the last five years. Looking forward, again, these numbers could change. Next year, we're kind of expecting the money to be about the same, maybe a little bit of a drop in the years ahead. There's a big bump coming in a few years when the Fire Department is looking at spending some money on a new firehouse. I think the point to be taken here is that there does not look to be like a dramatic drop in capital requests coming in the next few years. So as the Finance Committee said, as a town, we might be looking at trying to find ways to save money. Certainly, capital articles is one way to do that. I would like to point out, however, that some departments are beginning to find ways to have money come from other sources. You'll hear a little bit more about how the Fire Department this year had about half of the money for the turnout gear, be paid for by grants. And as I mentioned, the Police Department is looking at getting grants for some of their future expenditures as well. So, Mr. Moderator, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I think on behalf of everybody, I would point out that the hard work of committees like the Capital Committee really help us in our deliberations. I can remember years ago when we would have these individual debates about all these articles on town meeting floor, but it's comforting to know that people are deliberating about this and making five-year plans on a regular basis. So, Steve, we appreciate everything that you and your colleagues do on that committee. I think we're ready for the first part of Article 34, then.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 for the purpose of rewiring the town building and enabling it to be powered by a portable generator during emergency outages.
Is there any discussion? Does the Capital Budget Committee want to talk about each individual article, or? Yes. Okay, Ross?
Ross Perry, Circuit Drive. Capital Committee recommends supporting this expenditure. This will provide town building with the capability to plug in an emergency generator to help the central building services function during the event of a power outage. It does not actually provide the generator. The plan is to rent that in case, when we need it.
Any further discussion? Jean?
May I make an amendment?
You may, if you write it down and give us a copy.
No, the, my understanding was that the number moved would be $45,000.
So are you amending it or asking a question?
If I have to amend it, I will do so.
Okay. We're waiting for clarification if the, the motion was...
The motion was supposed to be $45,000. It wasn't corrected in my motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
So would you like to remake that?
Yes, sure.
I think it's, Town Council?
Okay.
If the person who made the motion would like to amend it, they can remake the motion? Yes?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I...
Ms. Sturgis?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,000 for the purpose of rewiring the town building and enabling it to be powered by a portable generator during emergency outages.
Okay. We had a second? I made a mistake. FinCom is going to go first with their recommendation, or?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article for $45,000.
And I guess, Ross, the question is, will $45,000 buy us what you told us?
Capital Planning still recommends the $45,000, and yes, it covers what we are looking for.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Farrell?
As a member of Capital Planning, I think it's important to clarify that this pays for wiring for a generator, but not the generator.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Sturgis?
The Board of Selectmen actually approve all the Capital Committee's recommendations.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Gregor Trinkusranal, 56 Wheeler Road. Just a point of clarification, and that is that if it's either a gubernatorial or presidential declaration and we lose power, you can probably get the generator for free from FEMA.
So noted. All those in favor of Article 34-1, the emergency generator for the town building, $45,000? All those opposed? That passes nearly unanimously. Just needed a majority. We'll call it better than two-thirds. Article 34-2?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of increasing the energy use efficiency of the town building.
Second? Let's go with the Capital Committee first.
Mr. Moderator, the Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports this article. The energy use audit conducted by the Stowe Energy Working Group determined that many of the measures that are going to be covered by this article will pay for themselves almost immediately. And we think this is exactly what the town should be doing with all their buildings, and we feel like this is a very wise use of capital and completely support the request.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments about Article 34-2? I think I see someone making his or her way to the front. Take your time.
Margaret Tucker, South Acton Road. I just have a quick question. What are these measures that will be, are being proposed?
Question is, what are the specific measures that are being proposed? Is someone prepared to answer that?
Yes, Craig Martin, the Building Inspector.
Oh, thank you.
The $10,000 is an amount to cover a changeout of the lighting fixtures in the town building. We have a 20-year-old building with what we call T-12 fluorescent fixtures. They're out of date now. We can get more efficient lighting fixtures, so we're going to go to the T-8, and that's the cost of changing out those units. the cost of changing out those units in the town building.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We're now voting on Article 34-2, energy-efficient lighting for the town building at ten thousand dollars. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Article 34-3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of expanding the parking area at the town building.
Second. Capital Planning Committee?
Sure you don't want to cover this one, Brian? Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning unanimously supports this expenditure. The current parking lot is often full during the day and often overfull on certain meeting nights. The proposed design for this expansion appears to minimize impact to the conservation area, and the cost has been reduced through support of the highway department.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this item. I've also noticed the parking lot very full.
Thank you. We have some questions or comments.
Gay Gibson McDonald, Three Eighty Seven Gleesendale Road. I wondered, I was under the impression that all land that wasn't currently being utilized was Lawrence land, which was given to the town as conservation land. Am I misunderstanding how that stands?
Can someone help the moderator here? I'm sure there are many.
There is a conservation easement that is drawn on the property, but it doesn't cover the land we're talking about. In fact, we're not encroaching at all onto the proposed, and we've met and discussed with the Concom on this, and they are in agreement with us with regard to the land that's available without encroaching on the conservation easement restriction.
And is there a diagram showing this?
There is a diagram. It's not up there, but we do have one.
I don't see it.
It's available, but thank you for that question.
Tori Fletcher, Ten White Pond Road. I'm just wondering whether any of these funds might be expended for some ability to walk to the town hall, say, for example, from the library. You could easily park on the road that is in front of the library and the First Parish Church, if only you could get there by foot. But as it now stands, people who live within two or three houses of the town building cannot walk there, and it seems like a lot of money to expend for vehicles for those who might be able to walk a short distance.
Mr. Wrigley?
There are no funds in this budget to accomplish that task, but clearly, if funds were made available through an appropriation to do that. In fact, there's residual money left over from the Tricentennial, I believe, sidewalk. Is Mike here? I think there's sixteen thousand plus of my, as they're still continuing the effort of extending down Great Road, and that, those funds may be used for that purpose. It should be noted as well that we intend to resurface the existing parking area in the town with this money. So that budget that you see at fifty thousand will include not only the construction of the additional parking with retaining wall and other matters, but we hope to be able to resurface the existing parking surface area, which is in desperate need of repair.
But the short answer is that absolutely none of the fifty thousand dollars would assist in allowing people to walk to the town building.
No, the intent here was strictly to create additional parking.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Jellonak speaking on behalf of the Capital Planning Committee. I mean, we brought this point up as we were debating this article. As far as overflow parking is concerned for town building, you know, you're talking about having to walk across Great Road, and, you know, we've had issues there in the past with the safety aspect of people walking across that part of the main road through town. And we felt like, you know, this is pretty short money for being able to resolve that problem from that perspective. I mean, I think we all wish we could walk to town building, but fact of the matter is, at this point in time, we really have trouble doing that. So expanding the parking lot was considered to be kind of a necessary evil as far as that goes.
Thank you.
Hi, Judy Two Parford Road. How many extra parking spaces are we getting?
We're hopeful to net sixteen.
And where is the expansion of the lot, like, as I'm looking at the town?
Essentially, if you park facing south, it's that area right in front of you. That's the area between the body of water and the current surfaced area.
Alice DeLuca, Twenty-Six Crescent Street. Is there any town committee that's currently looking at making more walking, walkable town, the center of town more walkable?
I think it's Asbit River Rail Trail in Ross.
So that would be no?
I just happened to see him standing right by you. This ought to work.
I can read the subtitles.
I can comment on that, Alice. I don't want to jump the gun on the master plan, but as you'll hear in the fall, you may know from the survey results we conducted late last year, additional sidewalk and walking capability in the towns were very high on the agenda. Most people have responded. And I can say it's a safe bet at this point that we will be recommending a much more aggressive way to expand the sidewalk situation in Stowe.
Great. Thank you.
Ingeborg Clark, Carrington Way, and I'm speaking personally and not as a member of the Conservation Commission. I'm wondering if the need for the parking could be alleviated if most of the board members didn't always meet at the same time at the same night?
Did people hear the question? The question was, would the need for additional parking be alleviated if all the boards didn't meet at the same time?
The painful fact is, is that we can't conduct business during the day now without people parking on the lawn, parking on One Seventeen, and attempting to cross that street, which is a safety issue. As many of you are aware, we've had near misses and we've had direct hits on One Seventeen. Irrespective of putting the sidewalk there, there still is the safety issue of getting across One Seventeen at the town building. We've looked at several areas of attempting to expand parking without having to expand on-site, but the fact is, there are no good alternatives for us without off-site parking and asking people to walk some distance to get there and cross One Seventeen. On a cost benefit, I don't think the measurements are close.
Thank you. Yes?
Kathleen Willis, Forty-Five Walcott Street. With respect to the concept of additional sidewalks in town, that's something that the planning board is also looking at, and there are funds in a sidewalk fund that's part of the planning board money that's been contributed by developers who have not put sidewalks in front of their developments but have contributed to be used for sidewalks in other places in town. And we will be proposing the creation of a committee that we've tried, I think, at least seven times in the past, and we've never gotten anyone to come forward and participate to develop a plan for implementing more sidewalks in town. So if you're interested, watch for, this will be coming hopefully in the next couple of months, because we are interested in expanding the sidewalk network. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
David Horn, Thirty-Three Kirkland Drive. How many parking spots do we have now at town building, and how many will we gain?
Okay. We're going to gain sixteen, I heard, but how many do we have now?
There are thirty-eight parking spaces. Several of them are handicapped. Linda Hathaway, the town clerk, and I am the one that often will schedule for the town hall and also keep track of the meetings that are going on in our building. And as Bill mentioned, during the day, it's very hard to find any parking, but even on the weekend or any other time, it's very limited, because if things are going on at the library or at the church or even up the school at Hartley Road or Center School, there's no parking for our building to go anywhere else. So I would recommend the passage of this article so that we could get at least a few more spaces and make better uses of our building and make it safer. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other questions or comments on Article 34-3? Hearing and seeing none. I think we're ready for the vote. This is to expand the parking lot at the town building for fifty thousand dollars. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your cards. All those opposed? That passes nearly unanimously, but greater than two-thirds, and it only required a majority. Article Thirty-four-Three.
Four.
Four. Excuse me.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of two-hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new ambulance.
Okay, remember, as was pointed out earlier, this is being moved from free cash. Finance Committee? I see the, oh, no, capital committee. I thought Steve was talking about it, and he went across the, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this item.
They can't hear you.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. Ross, for the capital planning committee?
Capital Planning is in favor of this purchase. The existing ambulance is having maintenance problems, and the new ambulance will have four-wheel drive, which will be necessary to help access driveways and our roads during the winter. We feel it's crucial to have reliable equipment for our public safety, first responders.
May I ask a question? How old is our current ambulance? Does anyone know?
I believe it's eight years.
Eight years, okay. Questions or comments?
John Haberly from Indian Ridge Road. I just have a couple of comments, and it's somewhat of a question. I want to make sure that all options had been explored. The quote that I got from somebody in the industry said that this is on the high end of the cost, but less than some spend. The second comment is that if the box itself is in good shape, it is much less expensive to simply unbolt the box and put it on a new chassis. If you need a four-wheel-drive chassis, just take the existing ambulance, put it on a new one. These are simply comments. I just want, and the question is, I want to make sure that all options like this had been explored prior to deciding to purchase a new ambulance. And second part of that is, on the old ambulance, will there be proceeds from that back to the town on its sale?
Does the chief want to speak to these issues?
Good evening. I'm Mike McLaughlin, and some very good questions were asked, and we have looked at a lot of options on the ambulance. One of the thing with the ambulance is with its age, it has almost fifty-three thousand miles on it, but it has a lot of idle time. And when you look at that, it's not only a matter of just the box, which is a very good question, but all the wear and tear that's on the ambulance, to take that box and put it onto another rig is really not a financial, you know, ROI on that. We've looked at that. We've crunched a lot of numbers and looked at it a lot of ways, and we think the best prudent investment for the town is to just replace the entire vehicle. One of the things to remember is we only have one ambulance in Stowe, so it's very important that that's always ready and can get up and go. We are adding four-wheel drive. That does add a lot, you know, extra cost to it. And the other safety feature that we're looking at is adding an electric stretcher, which helps, you know, lowering the patient up and down. That's a tremendous back saver for our firefighters and for our EMTs. And it's really, when you look at that, too, there's a big return on firefighter injuries. We very often have firefighter EMTs that hurt their backs, so we're hoping that that's going to help reduce that. And it's also a huge issue for patient safety as well.
I think the last part of the question had to do with, are there any funds coming back to the town?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, the ambulance in fiscal two thousand eight brought back, after all the payments were made, Emerson was almost forty-two thousand dollars. We don't have final numbers on FY-oh-nine, but I suspect that that's going to continue to rise. Our ambulance runs have continually gone up. I would say it's probably going to be at least a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that it brings back to the town, and that goes back into the general fund.
Was that your question? Okay.
I just thought the other ambulance would be sold.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
The hardware as opposed to the fees.
Will be traded in. And normally, what happens with that when you trade it in? There are some private ambulance companies that are interested in buying a old ambulance. And what they're going to use that for? They will use that for non-emergency transfers. They will use that to, you know, go to someone's home, give them a ride to the hospital to get an x-ray. It's not an emergency, or they'll transport a patient for dialysis care and then transport them back home.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing and seeing none. We're ready to vote on Article Thirty-four-Four, to replace the ambulance for two-hundred thousand dollars. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes nearly unanimously and required just a majority. Article Thirty-four-Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-three thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing turnout gear for the fire department.
Got a motion and a second. Capital Planning Committee?
Capital Planning recommends this expenditure. The protective equipment worn by our firefighters needs replacement, and equipping them for these hazards of their job is very important. The fire department and Chief McLaughlin are to be congratulated in obtaining a grant that cuts, covers almost fifty percent of the overall cost, reducing it from over a hundred thousand dollars to the requested fifty-three thousand dollars. We think this is certainly money being well-spent.
Thank you, Ross. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about Article Thirty-four-Five? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Those in favor of spending fifty-three thousand to replace turnout gear, please raise your cards. Those opposed, please raise your cards. That is unanimous. Article Thirty-four-Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new pickup truck for the highway department.
Capital Planning Committee?
Mai Ivanovich. Capital Planning supports this purchase. The current truck has over a hundred-and-ten thousand miles and needs to be replaced. The new truck will have an extended cab and a nine-foot snowplow.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I think we're ready for the vote, to replace the three-quarter-ton pickup truck for forty thousand dollars. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, raise your cards. Nearly unanimous. I see one vote against. Again, that required just a majority. Article Thirty-four-Six, seven, excuse me.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new air compressor for the highway department.
May I hear a second? Thank you. Capital Planning?
Capital Planning agrees with this request. The current compressor is from nineteen eighty-six and often overheats, and also, this project was delayed from last year.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, all those in favor of replacing the air compressor for fifteen thousand, raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Article Thirty-four-Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-three thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new cruiser for the police department.
Capital Planning Committee?
Capital Planning recommends this annual purchase. It's part of the police department's ongoing maintenance and replacement plan and helps ensure that the police officers have reliable and safe equipment.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. We have a speaker at the microphone.
Alan Fierce, Twenty-four Red Acre Road. I continue to watch what the Ford Motor Company does, and I'm still terribly disappointed that they're not making anything other than the Crown Vic. I'm assuming that's what we're purchasing again. There are hopes that in the near future, we'll see a hybrid police cruiser out there that fits the needs of the police department, at which time I hope our chief will jump to the opportunity and get on that bandwagon. But as it stands right now, there is no such option. So I do support the- So I do support the purchase of a cruiser this year. I do have a question, though. I saw on an earlier slide, the projection for the Police Department's capital budget jumping considerably next year. That sounds like more than just one additional police cruiser next year, so I'm wondering if somebody can tell us what that's all about.
You're just going to have to come back next year and find out.
May I, Mr. Moderator? I think the larger number that you're referring to is the number for the improvements to the dispatch area, and that's off the table right now. Or they're looking for other ways of funding it.
Mark, did you have any other comments about hybrid versus non-hybrid that you'd like to make? I think that's all Alan wants to know, that you're looking at the options and... Yeah. Maybe you guys should build one.
The amount of money I am asking for next year is to purchase a hybrid that was 107, is it? It comes with extra batteries. Alan's been great, and we have emailed each other with various options to look at for hybrids. I've researched hybrid vehicles, I've had many nights of worrying about town meeting, how am I going to answer all these questions about hybrids? But when it comes down to it, the Ford Crown Victoria is a police vehicle that does work for us, and if they ever come out with a hybrid, Alan will be the first to know, and I'll keep him on my side, but I'm asking for a vehicle that works for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments? Questions? All those in favor of replacing the police cruiser for $33,000, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Article thirty-four-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Article twenty-six of the 2003 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of making roof repairs at the Hail School.
Okay, before we get to the recommendations, I just want to point out that these monies are being moved from a previous town meeting vote, and therefore will require a two-thirds majority. The source of funding's a little different. Capital Planning.
Mr. Moderator, this is, the Hail School roof is part of a multi-year project to upgrade the roof at Hail, and we were certainly very pleased to find out that there was existing money, so this will have no tax impact, because it is existing.
Those are monies that were... Bill, would you mind describing where those monies came from, just so that everyone's clear?
In 2003, there was a borrowing that was approved by town meeting for the purposes of making improvements and repairs to both Pompo and Center School. It's the balance that we have remaining from those borrowed funds that were not necessary to complete the projects, and essentially what I'm attempting to do is simply take those funds, they would otherwise go back to the general fund, so we wouldn't lose them. And my thinking was, why raise more tax money this year if we had it available to us, and we do? The statutes allow us to take for any purpose for which you could borrow, not necessarily for the same municipal purposes, but any lawful municipal purpose. So it wouldn't have to be for the same school, or even for schools. But that's what we're doing here. We're recapturing owed money.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the Hail School roof repairs? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of $60,000 to pay for the Hail School roof repairs, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Article thirty-four-ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Article twenty-six of the 2003 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $42,000 for making, for the purpose of making floor and ceiling repairs to the Center School.
Okay, I just want to point out that the article was moved with a dollar amount different from what was printed in your warrant. The article was moved with a dollar amount of $42,000, not the $15,000 that was printed in the warrant. Capital Planning?
The difference between, the $15,000 was part of a multi-year project to replace asbestos tiles at Center School, the floor tiles. And because this money is already available, this will complete the project, so it will not come up again. So it's the whole project rather than being a partial.
Thank you for that clarification.
And Capital is in favor.
And this is from the same pool of money that Bill described earlier. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this item.
Are there any further questions or comments about replacing the Center School floor and ceiling tiles? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of $42,000 for that project, raise your cards, good. All those opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Thank you very much. And I think at this point, the real moderator is going to take over.
Article thirty-five. Mr. Duggan?
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the vote of the town passed under Article thirty-six of the warrant for the May seven, 2007 Annual Town Meeting, by inserting the phrase, quote, "the renovation of the Pompositiquet School," end, close quote, so to read in its entirety as printed in the 2009 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Mr. Burklow from the Finance Committee, did you have a recommendation on this article?
Ms. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this warrant article. This item appropriates no new funds and allows the Elementary School Building Committee to use funding already approved to adhere to any state-required study of the Pompositiquet School.
Thank you. Ms. Sturgis, did you plan on a brief presentation on Article thirty-five?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I just want to take the opportunity to give you a brief update of where the School Building Committee is, and explain to you the specifics of this article. First, I'm co-chair of the Elementary School Building Committee along with Amy Hastings. Other members are Michael Wood, Lynn Coletti, Steve Quinn, Craig Martin, and Gary Burnglow. Appreciate all their work. So this first slide sort of gives you an overview of where we've been in the last, well, since 2007, when we originally moved this article, which is just about two years ago. At that time, we approved up to $2.2 million for Center School solution, the One School Solution we had proposed at that time. We submitted our statement of interest for both schools to the MSBA shortly thereafter. The MSBA, I won't go through all the steps, but they asked us to prioritize, so we had to put Pompo as the school that was most in need of a change. We were put into the regional assessment category, because they wanted us to consider regionalizing with the Maynard School System. We were able to convince them by May of 2008 that that wasn't a good option for us or for Maynard, and we were moved at the feasibility study phase. That allowed us to hire an owner's project manager last fall, which is again part of the MSBA requirements, and we've just recently hired an architect, the SMMA, the architect firm that we used for our conceptual studies two years ago. I want to say, throughout this period, we've been working on a fundraising plan. As early as 2008, we received our first grant from Intel and the Organization for the Assabette River for stormwater management, which will reimburse us up to $400,000 for a design that will reduce the stormwater runoff into the Assabette Water, Assabette River watershed. Next slide. So here are the, some of the next steps to completion, and this is not only abbreviated, but also all subject somewhat to change, because as you know, we're working with the MSBA here, and they really need to work with us in approving the steps as we move along. What we're hoping is that this month, we will get final approval of the One School Concept that we brought to this town meeting two years ago. All indicators say they're going to support that, but because we don't have that formal approval is why, well, I'll explain the article tonight, but that's essentially where we're going. What we also hope to happen after that, we'll be working on with the architect and the owner's project manager this summer. We'll propose a actual firm design and cost estimates to the MSBA for their September Board Meeting, and then we will hopefully bring to this body a special town meeting in October to vote on the construction dollars for our project. At that point, we then hire a contractor. The first phase, if you don't remember, was to build the addition at Center. We would move the kids from Center into the new addition, renovate the current Center School, and then ultimately move all the kids from Pompositiquet into the completed, expanded school at Center, and turn Pompositiquet back to the town. Those are a lot of steps, there's a lot of steps within that, we're not really sure what they'll look like, but that's the general overview of where we're going. Next slide. So the article looks very similar to what it was two years ago. The only difference is the phrase that I've got here highlighted in yellow, "the renovation of the Pompositiquet School." Now, we all agreed at that point, after the process the School Building Task Force went through, that we really wanted to do this One School Solution, the renovation and addition at Center, to not do anything to Pompo. Because as I said, we haven't got the formal approval from the MSBA yet to go with that, we needed to insert this language into the vote, just in case the MSBA required us to do this, and we said we would do that. So that's the only change that's going on here. It's not changing our intent. It's, there's no change in the dollar amount that we are moving, it's the same amount we had voted on two years ago. It's not a request for construction dollars, and the, yes, the School Building Committee is still committed to the One School Solution. If for some reason the MSBA voted this month not to support our recommended One School Solution, we would essentially go back to the drawing board.
Thank you. Town Council advises that we need to read the motion again, and to include the language that's actually printed in the Article thirty-five, as opposed to just referring to it. So Mr. Duggan will now do that.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the vote of the town passed under Article thirty-six of the warrant for the May seven, 2007 Annual Town Meeting, to read as follows. That $1,900,000, or any other sum not to exceed $2,200,000, is appropriated for engineering and architectural services, owner's project manager, and any other Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, related program requirements and related activities in compliance with MSBA regulations. For the design and development and preparation of plans and specifications through the bidding phase of the project for the purpose of the renovation of the Pompositiquet School and the renovation of and construction of in addition to the Center School, the total project cost of which is estimated to be $30,080,000. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,900,000, or any other sum not to exceed $2,200,000, under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority. That if it is determined that the renovation of and construction of in addition to the Center School is to be undertaken, and that the renovation of the Pompositiquet School is not to be undertaken, the custodial control of the Pompositiquet School shall return back to the town following the completion of the renovation of and construction of in addition to the Center School, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. The amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds authorized by this vote, having been excluded from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C, Proposition Two and a Half, by a vote of the town passed at the May fifteen, 2007, town election.
Second. Are there any questions from Ms. Sturgis on Article thirty-five? This does require a two-thirds vote, I'm sorry.
I'm back. Gary Small, 107 Mile Drive. I just wanted to ask a question, and more as a, get information before we vote. I had understood that it was possible that one of our sister towns who share the consortium within the show were regional, were feeling the stress of population in their schools as well, that being Lancaster, I believe. And I don't know whether the body that has been involved with the school planning has considered, does not like me, has considered the idea of approaching Lancaster as a joint building for a middle school, sharing the cost, reducing our carry by 50%, and leaving Center School and using this school as the elementary school. Therefore, reducing the impact on the environment, the impact on the town, reducing our costs by 50%, and forming an even stronger bridge with the consortium that we already have. So, I don't know, whether you've even considered that, or if it's a possibility?
It has been considered, over the years, numerous times in different forms, about creating a regional middle school in the school district because of varying degrees of population growth. At this point, it wasn't looked at, and my understanding is that Lancaster, actually, when they built their new elementary and middle school, actually, they designed that to have a, there was a footprint left for a very low-cost, if necessary, addition to allow for their population growth, and I don't believe they're anywhere near, they're not even at this point got it on the table, last I heard, to build even that build out. So I don't believe they're having a population issue. The last time we addressed it was actually with Bolton, who was in more of a population crunch, but they're now still using Emerson School, and even they have reduced their need to expand into Emerson School. So our school, regional agreement has always stated that our students up through grades eight will be educated within each individual town. If there was a pressing need by multiple towns, we would still be considering the middle school, but I think at this point, we're trying to stay focused on each of our towns.
Hi, John Haberly from Indian Ridge Road. I'll preface this by saying that I fully approve and support this type of a project, but one of the questions I have is, what kinds of protections do we have against spending this money, nearly 10% of our budget, and then next year having to turn around and say, oops, can't do it? Do we have any protections against that?
Meaning if we didn't get the MSBA approval?
Or if we didn't get approvals, or if we, something was voted down, do we have any way recourse to recollect that money back, or is it just spent?
We've actually spent some of this already, since we have been moving forward on the project over the last year with the two professional firms. We hired the project manager and the architect, though I couldn't tell you what the dollar amount is, it's fairly low still at this point. There's always been the chance that if MSBA didn't approve us, or if the town didn't approve, I mean, if at this point, there's two things that happen. First, the MSBA would decide right now, like this month, that they decided they don't like the One School Solution, and they want us to go back to the drawing board. That might cost us more money. I mean, we'd have to reconsider what we're going to do for next step, we'd actually stop spending at that point. The other, maybe the more likely option, or, because I think at this point, we're pretty safely with, we've been moving very carefully with the support of the MSBA. The second step would be that when we bring to the proposal to town meeting, particularly in light of the changing economic climate, that the town would not vote to support the construction funds, in which case, these funds would essentially be considered, they would be sunk costs. I mean, we would have spent the money on the design, on the, you know, all the details that we needed to get to that point, and then not have the funding to build. There's no one we can recourse at that point, except for ourselves. I mean, I will say that the minute we get approval from the MSBA for this concept, we're eligible for reimbursement for, up to what we understand is 50% of all the costs we're spending. So everything we've spent to date on this approved project will be eligible for 50% reimbursement from the town. That said, I think that stops the minute that, if the town voted down the project. Hopefully, we will have collected up to then, but then, we'd still be out the 50%.
Seeing and hearing no further questions or comments, all in favor of Article thirty-five. All opposed? Then it's unanimous. Article thirty-six.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate...
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,400 for the purpose of providing home care services and communicable disease follow-up to Stowe residents to be expended under the direction of the Board of Health.
Mr. Walrath from the Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. For a number of years, the Board of Health contracted out some necessary social services, and that did not work out very well. Last year, the Board of Health opted to hire, directly hire, a part-time nurse to provide those services, and they believe, as I understand it, that that's working out quite well and are looking to continue that.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Article 36? Ready to vote? All in favor of Article 36? All opposed? It's nearly unanimous, requires a majority vote, so that passes. Article 37.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sale of lots of funds, some $3,000, to be expended under the direction of the Stowe District for the purpose of purchasing the snow blower catchment. It's unanimous.
Second. Mr. Kern from the Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. One of the primary uses of the snow blower will be to clear a path to the plot before the service. Seems like a good thing to do.
Seeing and hearing no questions or comments, all in favor of Article 37? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 38.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,500 for the purpose of erecting a new section of wood and granite fence at Brookside Cemetery.
Mr. Kern, do you have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this. This is a maintenance item. It's replacing a section of fence that's already there and is in bad repairs, so it's not, it's nothing new. It's repairing what we already have.
Seeing and hearing no questions, all in favor of Article 38? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 39. At this point, we begin two articles that pertain to our Community Preservation Committee, and Bob Wilbur would like to give a brief overview of that committee's progress to date. Mr. Wilbur.
Like to give you, excuse me, an overview of the current status of the Community Preservation Funds, a little bit on the state matching funds, and a little bit on what we've used the funds for over the years. Next slide. Okay. The Community Preservation Act was adopted here in Stowe in the spring of 2001. It was passed by the legislature about six months prior to that. It is for three primary purposes. The support of affordable housing, creation and support of affordable housing, acquisition and preservation of historic buildings and landscapes, and acquisition and preservation of open space land. Within that category is the creation of land for, and facilities for public recreation Since inception, we have, from Stowe tax surcharges, we've raised $2,720,000. We have state matching funds received to date of $2,270,000, and a nice interest in earnings figure of over $500,000. What I like about those figures is that we can say that of the community preservation projects that we have done to date, 51 cents on every dollar is something other than Stowe The total appropriated funds thus far, $3,226,000, and yet to be appropriated, $2,297,000. Total CPA funds there that have been raised overall, $5 million, $5 and 1/2 million. We've done some good things as a community with these funds over the years. We've had some nice access improvements to the West School, so that schools can take field trips there, among other things. Done some really nice renovations to the Lower Village Cemetery walls. These slides mainly show the before condition of those walls. I would urge anybody to take a walk or drive. I heard a lot about walking tonight, so take a walk down to Pomposidikit Road, along that way in particular, which was done most recently. Those are the extent of the stone walls that have been done through two different projects. That is now completed, and is a wonderful gateway to our community. Next slide. We've also done some good agricultural preservation here in town. I was pleased to see the Land Use Task Force rating ag preservation as essentially the top priority in town, is what I heard anyway. We've done a nice agricultural preservation restriction on the Mosley property off of Maple Street, part of the Applefield Farm operation, and then very recently, we also did an agricultural preservation restriction on the Al Tyler property, and I think Mr. Tyler is here somewhere tonight. But that is actually the farm stand location for the Applefield Farm itself. We've also acquired 37 permanent affordability restrictions at Pilot Grove. Those will keep those 37 units functionally affordable in perpetuity, and also relevant, it will keep all 60 units of apartments there, counting towards the town's quota of 10 percent of affordable units overall. We are closing in on the acquisition of an easement to complete the rail trail along the Asbit River. This is going to be a really nice piece for the town. A nice back route to Boone Lake for some, a back route to the shopping center for others, not using vehicles, and certainly part of the bike path beyond that, a commuter bike path to South Acton Train Station. So a few additional slides here, just to move through of what the bike path will look We've also did some good preservation of the Lake Boone as a community recreation resource. We had a very serious issue with aquatic invasive weeds. Those have been treated with community preservation funds several years ago, and wrapped up just as past here, as I understand it. Next slide, please. We are in process of creating a town recreation facility to be called the Stowe Recreation Park, and that will be off of Old Bolton Road. That construction started on March 30th, and is due to be wrapped up by mid-July, possibly early August. The implementation team appointed by the Board of Selectmen have been working very, very hard on this. It's going to be a terrific asset for the town. Next slide, unless it's on auto. That's the design that we're looking at? That's okay, Mike. You can put them all down. That's fine. Thanks. What we see here is the articles for this evening, two of which were passed as part of the consent calendar, and the two that are still hanging are Article 39 and Article 40, historic, excuse me, townwide historic property inventory and purchase of historic There's a few graphs that our administrator, Deb Seeth, put together. I think they're very helpful in terms of people understanding just exactly what is the current status of CPA funds here in town. Appropriated over the years by category, a little bit hard to read, but open space in sort of a lime green, the tan is affordable housing, and the historical is the dark color there, and then the dimpled is recreation. Decided to break recreation out as a separate category, although it is technically part of open space. I think most people would agree that active recreation and many of our passive conservation areas are very, very different things. This is a slide also, I think, is very helpful. It shows the funds that are unencumbered, remaining funds that are unencumbered. They may be technically part of the, one of the reserves for either open space, affordable housing, or historic preservation, but they're not encumbered to a specific project. Next slide. You also see unencumbered by category. We have a nice mix of what's left. If the Warren Articles that are going before you in a couple of minutes, if all of those passes, that's what we're looking at for remaining funds, unencumbered. Just to talk very briefly, as I wrap up, on state match. The Finance Committee's report indicated that the fact that the state matching funds have been decreasing for the community preservation, our community preservation funds, our local tax surcharge, what the state matches our surcharge with, that's true. I'll give you an example here, though, of why, being a 3 percent town, when we adopted this in May 2001, we decided to go to be a 3 percent community. That gave us the ability to qualify for the second and third rounds of state matching funds each year. And in FY08, which was the first year that the state match dropped below 100 percent for any community, the difference for us really showed up, being a 3 percent town. We would have received a 59 percent state match, and instead, we received 89 percent state match. The projection for FY09, the projection is that we will probably receive somewhere around 39 or 40 percent overall match. Now, that is down certainly from the multiple 100 percent match years. Two key points, it was never intended to be 100 percent match indefinitely, and number two, 40 percent match in this economy is still a terrific value. The last thing I'd mention on that is that there is pending legislation that would create a permanent floor of 75 percent state match for all CPA communities. So, it depends who we talk to as to whether that will pass anytime soon. I think that's it for the overview, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. The CPC is required to submit to us a written letter that they have voted on and approved the Warren Articles before us tonight, and that vote occurred on March 9th of 2009. So we can now turn to Article 39. Ms. Sturgis?
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $50,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for Historic Preservation Purposes in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44b, the Community Preservation Act, to be expended under the direction of the Historical Commission for the purpose of creating a townwide historic properties inventory.
Mr. Salvi, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Ms. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. This expenditure of CPA funds for the preservation and inventory of local historical records has no effect on the tax rate.
Mr. Perry from Capital Planning?
Capital Planning supports the full requested amount.
Are there any questions on Article 39? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of Article 39, please raise your cards. All those opposed? It's nearly unanimous, it required a majority vote, and it's clearly a majority. Article 40. Mr. Duncan.
Ms. Moderator, I move no action on Article 40.
Second. Mr. Duncan, are you in a position to explain why they're moving no action, or would you prefer the Historical Commission?
I'd be glad to.
Okay.
The situation with this article is that since the warrant was printed, a very generous donor has come forward from Stowe and offered to pay the entire cost of acquiring this musket. And in fact, my understanding is we have a check in hand, and at the appropriate time, there'll be some formal recognition of this very generous gift to the town of Stowe. So if that proceeds as planned, there'll be no need for any money from CPA anyplace else to pay for the part of the musket.
All those in favor of voting no action on Article 40? All those opposed? It's unanimous. I see one, nearly unanimous. Article 41.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Section 4 of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986, as amended by Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, and further to act under the aforesaid statutes to increase by 100 percent the amount of property tax exemption granted to persons who qualify for said exemption under Clauses 17, 17c, 17d, 22, 22a, 22b, 22c, 22d, 22e, 37, 37a, 41, 41b, and 41c of Section 5 of Chapter 59 of the Massachusetts General Laws and Acts, and amendments thereof or additions thereto for fiscal year 2010.
Ms. DeLudi from the Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this item. It has very little effect on our tax rate.
Seeing and hearing no questions in Article 41. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 42. Mr. Robart.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 added to the balance from the previously appropriated and become a compensation fund for the town, for the purpose of bringing those supercharged expenses to the town's unemployment compensation.
Second. Mr. Walrath from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, as stated in the warrant, we got hit with an unemployment claim this year that had nothing to do with the town of Stowe laying anyone off due to an oddity in the, in the state unemployment laws. An employee that left for a job in another town was quickly laid off, and they weren't there long enough, so Stowe got hit with the unemployment claim for it. So we need to replenish our unemployment fund. And the Finance Committee does recommend in favor of this.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no questions, all in favor of Article 42? Please raise your card. All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 43.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to charge for each written demand issued by the collector a fee of $10 to be added to and collected as part of the tax, as authorized by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Section 15, effective as of June 1st, 2009.
Second. Mr. Walrath from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends in favor of this article. The treasurer believes that the $5 fee doesn't pay for the overhead. We are permitted to raise it up to $30, and the treasurer believes that that would be more revenue generation rather than paying for the actual cost of the overdue tax bills.
Seeing and hearing no questions in Article 43. All those in favor? All those opposed? Appears nearly unanimous, it requires a majority vote, so it passes. Article 44.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 18, so as to require that all retirees, their spouses and dependents who are enrolled in Medicare Part A at no cost to a retiree, their spouse or dependents, are eligible for coverage they're under, at no cost to a retiree, their spouse or dependents, be required to enroll in a Medicare Health Benefits Supplement Plan offered by the town.
Second. Mr. Walrath for the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends in favor of this article, as stated in the, in the-
in, in the warrant. Our current insurance provider's been after us to adopt this and if we ever wanted to convert to the state plan, as you've probably read about in the paper, that opportunity we would be required to accept this before we could even consider going to the state plan.
Seeing and hearing no questions on Article 44, all those in favor? All those opposed? Appears unanimous. Article 45. Mr. Duncan?
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to designate a permitting authority to issue permits and otherwise implement the provisions of the excavation and trench safety regulations, including the regulation of trenches as that term is defined by Mass. General Law Chapter 82A, Section 4, and 520 CMR 14 as promulgated by the Commonwealth and Massachusetts Department of Public Safety.
Mr. Salby for the Finance Committee.
Ms. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It implements a provision of state law that requires us to have a local permitting authority for the opening of trenches. The permits are issued if the person digging the trench is a licensed excavator, if they have the appropriate liability insurance, if they're contacted DigSafe, things like that. There's no real local enforcement mechanism. The enforcement that there is is done on the state level. It should have very little impact if any on the operational budget.
Seeing and hearing no questions on Article 45, all those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 47.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept a deed conveying the fee interest in certain parcels of land in the Wildlife Woods subdivision as printed in the warrant, shown as open space A1, open space A2, open space A3, open space A4, open space B, open space C, open space D, open space E, and open space F on a plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan, Wildlife Woods, Stowe, Massachusetts, dated May 15th, 1997, and revised through October 27th, 1999, and recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 1013 of 2000.
Ms. DeLudi for the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends acceptance of this item. There's no cost to the town, it adds to the open space, and it's already been reviewed by the Planning Board.
This article does require a two-thirds vote. Ms. Sefara, do you have a question or comment?
I have a comment and an amendment. Kathy Sefara, 583 Great Road, and speaking personally, not for the Conservation Commission. My purpose in speaking tonight is to make sure that the open space for the Wildlife Woods subdivision remains in its intended use as it is transferred from the developer and the homeowners association to the town. To be clear, I'm not here to advocate for or against management of the land by the Conservation Commission. They've not been asked if they're interested and don't have a position at this time. Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, says with regard to open space and cluster subdivisions, which this is, "Such open space shall either be conveyed to the city or town and accepted by it for park or open space use, or be conveyed to a conservation nonprofit, or be conveyed to a corporation or trust owned by the homeowners," in essence. And so what I'd like to propose as an amendment is the simple wording to see if the town will vote to accept for park or open space use, a deed conveying the fee interest. And I've shared this with town council, what I'll give to you.
So after the word "accept" in the warrant article, so it's "I move that the town vote to accept," Ms. Sefara is proposing an amendment to the, to the motion for park and open space use. And then she continues on with "a deed conveying the fee interest in certain parcels of land." Are there any questions or comments on the amendment? We're now discussing the amendment. Mr. Dodd.
Ernie Dodd, Planning Board. Our bylaw already makes a lot of provisions for what that land can be used for, and I'm not too sure what this amendment is calling for because it has, it already makes provisions for easements like for septic systems and for wells. There's a recreation field called out on the plan, so I'm not too sure what Kathy's change is.
Ms. Sefara, do you want to clarify?
If I can just clarify, I understand the wording of the bylaw, I understand that the decision that approved this development specifies the use of the land. What I'd simply like to do is codify that intent in the town meeting vote. As time goes and memories fade, it is this town meeting vote that's recorded that will document the purpose for which the land was accepted. So that was my intent.
So the bylaw still stands as it's written?
The bylaw absolutely stands, the decision stands. It's simply to make it consistent with Chapter 48, Section 9, about the allowed ownership of open space in development.
And if I can interrupt, I need a second on the motion to amend. Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
I have a concern about restricting the language of the use of the property. As you mentioned, sometimes as time goes by and memories fade, my memory is that because this was a clustered, planned clustered subdivision, there would be monitoring of the septic plumes in, over the course of years, of the flow of the septic toward, the groundwater toward North Shore Drive and the lake. And I'm wondering where would those monitoring places be and could they be in some restricted open space recreation land?
Ms. Sefara, do you have a comment to that? Or Ernie? Mr. Dodd?
There's already wells on this, monitoring wells on the site. And Bentley has been monitoring those wells. I haven't read the report, I've got some, but I haven't read them over in detail, but they have already been in the process of monitoring. But I don't know what the details of the reports are.
Ms. Farrell, did you have a follow-up question for Mr. Dodd?
I guess that's pertinent information if, if, who would take over the monitoring?
I would imagine, since it's public health, that the Board of Health would pick up the responsibility for it. The Planning Board, when the developer is finished, we still have bond money from the developer and we will review our decision, or the decision of the Planning Board at the time and make sure he has complied with all the provisions. But once he is finished, we will, you know, as far, if we determine he's completed all of his, all the decisions of the previous, of the Planning Board, we will release his bond. And then the monitoring of the wells would be up to, if the town owns it, the town would have to do it. And I think the, the wells were mainly there for monitoring the Devon's Annex or the Fish and Wildlife now because of the Superfund site or the hazardous waste that was on the site. And I think the, I think one of the reports said that the federal government's already given its blessing that all the toxic waste has been cleaned up on that site. So I'm not too sure. There are wells on the site, if we want them to monitor, then the Board of Health would have to annually go through and take samples and have them tested. I'm not too sure what else can be done.
Mr. Bucktell, do you have a comment?
Eric Bucktell, Fieldstone Drive, speaking behalf of myself as a private citizen. The, it's my understanding that Wildlife Woods subdivision included some parcel or parcels that were designated for recreation area easements, and I'm wondering how this motion could affect its use for, for any form of recreation. When the term "park" is used, I would suggest perhaps we could consider "park" and "recreation" as part of that. And I believe the PCD regulations that the development were built under, which includes the open space, allows the use of that land for recreation.
Kristin Donovan, 3 Blueberry Court. I actually live in the neighborhood. I want, I had the same question about the language in the amendment, just making sure that "park" doesn't mean ballpark because as far as traffic flow is concerned, there's no parking and it really, these areas are small areas. I just want to make sure that we can clarify that when you say "recreation area" in a park, that park doesn't mean ballpark or soccer field or...
I believe it was the intent of the Planning Board that the recreation area set aside would be there just for the residents of the PCD, not for a ballpark. It's not an area that's large enough to put anything but a small field in. And I can point out to you where it is.
Mr. Ryan, did you have a comment or question?
Tom Ryan, 453 Great Road. Given that it appears that members of the Planning Board weren't aware of this, they weren't necessarily aware of the ramifications or lack thereof, I would suggest that we vote against this article, or this amendment, because it may be putting restrictions on there that people don't necessarily understand. And we can always vote restrictions on it at a later date when we can have full public hearings on it. So I'd say vote against it.
Thank you. Mr. Bucktell, did you have another follow-up?
I, I just support the previous speaker. In an effort to keep the property unrestricted, we have the bylaws to guide its use. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no further comment or question, we're now voting on the amendment, not the motion itself. So all in favor of the amendment as submitted by Ms. Sefara, please raise your card. If you could raise your card really high, I appreciate it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, okay. It's a 21, okay. It has passed by majority. What? It has to pass by majority. Well, pass it, pass it. Do you have any thoughts? Okay. These are all... All those opposed? That's a clear majority and the amendment needs to have passed by majority. So now we will go to vote on the article itself, Article 47. All those in favor of Article 47? All those opposed? And that does need to pass by a two-thirds majority, but that was a clear two-thirds majority. Article 48. Mr. Robart?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the layout of Foxglove Lane from Station 0+0 to Station 6+47.8 as printed in the warrant and establish it as a town way, together with all drainage and other easements related thereto and included in the order of layout. The boundaries and measurements shown on the plan referred to in the description, which plan shall be included in the order of layout of the selectmen to be adopted with respect to such way and related easements and filed in the office of the town clerk in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 21 through 23.
Mr. Kern from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval. The Planning Board has reviewed and approved the development of the street. Furthermore, acceptance of the street will increase the town's share of the State Highway Assistance Fund under Mass. General Law Chapter 90.
Seeing and hearing no questions on Article 48, all those in favor? All those opposed? This does require the two-thirds vote and that was unanimous. Article 49.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the laying out of Lady Sipper Lane from Station 0.00 to Station 6.47.8 as printed in the warrant and established it as a town way, together with all drainage and other easements related thereto, and included in the order of layout, the boundaries and measurements shown on the plan referred to in its description, which plan shall be included in the order of layout of the selectmen to be adopted with respect to such way and related easements and filed in the office of the town clerk in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 21 dash 23.
Mr. Kern from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval. The Planning Board has reviewed and approved the development of the street.
Seeing and hearing no questions on Article 49, all those in favor? All those opposed? That does require the two-thirds quantum and that was unanimous. Article 50.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the laying out of Whispering Way from Station 10+0 to Station 13+0 as printed in the warrant and establish it as a town way, together with all drainage and other easements related thereto and included in the order of layout, the boundaries and measurements shown on the plan referred to in the description, which plan shall be included in the order of layout of the selectmen to be adopted with respect to such way and related easements and filed in the office of the town clerk in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21 to 23.
Mr. Kern from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval. The Planning Board has reviewed and approved the development of the street.
Seeing and hearing no questions or comments on Article 50, all in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 51.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the laying out of Woodland Way from Station 0+81.95 to Station 19+81.37 as printed in the warrant and establish it as a town way, together with all drainage and other easements related thereto and included in the order of layout, the boundaries and measurements shown on the plan referred to in the description, which plan shall be included in the order of layout of the selectmen to be adopted with respect to such way and related easements and filed in the office of the town clerk in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 21 to 23.
Mr. Kern from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval.
Seeing, seeing and hearing no questions on Article 51, all those in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Article 52.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the laying out of Cider Mill Road as printed in the warrant and establish it as a town way, together with all drainage and other easements related thereto and included in the order of layout, the boundaries and measurements shown on the plan referred to in the description, which plan shall be included in the order of layout of the selectmen to be adopted with respect to such way and related easements and filed in the office of the town clerk in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 21 to 23.
Mr. Kern from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval.
Seeing and hearing no questions or comments, all those in favor of Article 52? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 53.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the laying out of Kettle Plain Road as printed in the warrant and establish it as a town way, together with all drainage and other easements related thereto and included in the order of layout, the boundaries and measurements shown on the plan referred to in the description, which plan shall be included in the order of layout of the selectmen to be adopted with respect to such way and related easements and filed in the office of the town clerk in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 21 to 23.
Mr. Kern from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval.
Seeing and hearing no questions or comments, all those in favor of Article 53? All those opposed? And it's unanimous. It's now 10:30 and it's... It's now 10:30 and it's, it appears to me that we have, how many? Eight articles left. I'm happy to keep going. I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn. It's, keep going?
I'm on a stretch. German. Keep going.
Okay. We can take a formal motion. Okay. We'll keep going. We'll keep going. We'll get it done. Article 54.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws as it relates to Article 1 of the general bylaws by adding a new Section 4 in Article 2 of the general bylaws by adding a new Section 11 to read in its entirety as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Salby from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It stems from the feelings of some citizens at town meeting, feelings of discomfort when exercising their vote on certain articles at town meetings. It seems that a paper ballot on some big-ticket items is a way to address that perception. This perception could lead to lack of attendance at town meeting, people not exercising their votes the way that they want to. This will result in some delay, but it will increase attendance at town meeting and make people feel freer to exercise their votes. The benefits seem to outweigh the risks and we recommend approval.
Mr. Rogario.
Yes, Madam Moderator. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article. There are some mixed feelings on it that do you really need an article to have closed votes when it gets to the $500,000 limit? But our feeling is if this makes people feel more comfortable that other people aren't watching them and recording what they're doing and they will attend the town meeting, that it is a step that we should be taking. It has been brought to us by a group of citizens and they made the case for it. As I said, if this will increase the attendance at town meeting or at least keep it steady, we're for it. Thank you.
Is Mr. Perry here to make a presentation? Okay. All right. First speaker?
Please.
All right, go ahead.
Tim Reed, Reddick Road. I would like to suggest that we vote against this. I've been attending town meetings for over 30 years and I have felt that the power of my conviction when I've raised my card, and I've also felt the respect of my fellow town members for my convictions. And the fact that, that this respect for people's opinions is being eroded is not going to be corrected by this motion. I think that it's, it is moving in a direction to make town meeting more cumbersome. It's going to make it more lengthy and will discourage people from coming to town meeting. Again, I regret the fact that people feel that their opinions are not respected and as a community, we should be working for the acceptance of all people's convictions and not by hiding behind paper ballots.
The next speaker, please.
Very small, 107 Lowell Drive. I agree with the last, with the last person who spoke. Also to add that the town meeting is the epitome of the democratic process. It encapsulates the right to free speech. It also encapsulates the right to dissent. And I think that by placing a paper ballot, it allows that to be lost, that there should be more emphasis on expecting and demanding mutual respect, whether you agree or not, and not simply hiding behind a piece of paper. I like this way of voting. I'd like to see it stay.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Margaret Irwin, Reddick Road. I strongly do not support this motion. As has been said earlier, we have been having town meeting for a long time and when people strongly feel one way or another, they should feel comfortable standing up and voting. This is an attempt to hide behind a paper ballot and not make your vote count in terms of who you are and what you're voting for. It negates any transparency in local government. I agree, it would make people stay away from town meeting. It would seem like it, issues could just be run roughshod through town meeting with no one being held accountable for their own feelings and for their own opinions. And I strongly urge us to vote this down.
Next speaker, please.
Ed DeLuca, 26 Crescent Street. I'm also opposed to this. I really don't think that the character of the town has changed. I think the public ballot has worked well in the past. I don't believe that people are any different now than they have in the past. I don't believe that things are more controversial now or that people are any thinner skinned than they were in the past. And if in fact, there is, you know, people are taking offense, then we should address that as, you know, that is the problem. It is not the problem of the ballot per se, but the ballot, the problem of lack of respect. And I would like to see where that, where that is coming to play. I would suggest that the lack of attendance tonight probably has more to do with the baseball and basketball games that are going on than, than with the, any ballot issues.
Thank you. Ms. Deludi.
Hi, Ann Deludi, Birch Hill Road, speaking as a private citizen. The first words I heard when I had coffee with my neighbors were, "Do not go to town meeting, you will be harassed for your vote." It's a perception, they're not here and they will never be here. Okay? It's that simple. If you want to know what your neighbors think, you're going to have to give them some privacy and not harass them. And it's been going on for years. So do with it what you will, paper ballot or no, you have to take your chances.
I'm sorry, Mr. Robart, I didn't see.
I, I won't pretend to speak for Ted Perry and others who have drafted this, this language, but I have spoken with them and I can tell you that they would take point with being, with it being suggested that they're hiding behind a paper ballot. The intent, as I understand it, is, as the previous speaker just indicated, to ensure that, that folks are comfortable and feel comfortable in, in voting. And I would suggest to, to this group that, A, this is already a possibility. At any point in time, any of us in this room can call for a paper ballot to be, to be implemented on any warrant article. This actually limits that to any article over $500,000 that, that with the exception of a school article or the general, general budget article. So I, I absolutely understand the intent of the folks who have brought this to town meeting and actually I support this and would encourage you to do the same.
Thank you. Yes, the next speaker, please.
Hi, Ames Coney, 371 Sudbury Road. I've, I've come to town meeting a long time and what I've observed is we have a lot of debates that go on and on and on and then we finally do a show of the cards and it's 85% toward one side or the other. If we had to stop for a paper ballot to find that out, that would just make this meeting go forever. So I'm certainly opposed to this. Thank you.
Mrs. Gray.
Karen Gray, Pine Point. The gentleman who just spoke, spoke that usually were in unanimity on many things, but there aren't the things that involve over $500,000. And I watched at a contentious meeting my flow of emails the following day listing who did and did not vote for a certain thing and I felt invaded. And I'm sorry that you people think that this makes me alter, prickly or sensitive, but I think we have had the disrespect served to people who voted in a particular fashion already.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Claudia Dragon, 109 Kirkland Drive. I wanted to voice concern about this vote and recommend against it and I hope everyone votes no for the paper ballot. My main concern is that the town meeting is the legislative body for the town and we are talking about, you know, citizens in the town voting for things and especially with our elected officials, I like to know what people are, where they stand. In the United States Senate, in the State House, the legislative votes are taken, there's a, there's a roll call and it's public knowledge what people are voting for, especially the elected officials. And I think that with paper ballots, we won't know that and we'll, we'll miss that.
Next speaker, please.
I have a question for Mr. Robart. Are you saying that this article says that we will not have any call for paper ballots for amounts under $500,000 if it passes?
No, I'm suggesting that the, the way the article is written, it would be for anything over $500,000, it would be by paper ballot.
Yes.
My, the point I was making is that anyone for any dollar amount right now can call for a paper ballot. We could do this for $25.
And this will not change that fact, that any voter can call for a paper ballot at any time?
That, that is correct and, and actually I did have that conversation with, with the folks who put this together and their point of view was it, for, for someone to stand up and say, "I want to move that we have a paper ballot on this particular article," they felt that they would feel the same pressure as they're feeling right now to, to sway their vote. So going on record and saying, "I want a paper ballot on XYZ article," in essence, you're saying to town meeting, you know, "I, I feel uncomfortable voting for this article through a regular show of, of cards." So their intent was to, to make themselves more, or to give everyone more comfort in voting the way that they please and making it easier to do that as opposed to having to take a vote to take a paper ballot.
I understand why someone would want to do that. My question is specifically, this does not change the way. And I want to make a point that I'm personally uncomfortable with the fact that a lot of the people who have recommended this particular ballot are not here tonight to speak to it.
Mr. Walworth from Finance Committee had a comment.
Yeah, just to clarify, there was, I think there was an accidental misstatement earlier. The way this is written, it would require a paper ballot for any article over $500,000 except the things that you saw tonight in Article 5, including the municipal and school budgets. But that would not limit anyone from requesting a paper ballot for any other article, including the, the annual operating budget in Article 5.
Thank you, Mr. Walworth. Next speaker.
Phil Lodeen, 11 Crescent Street. I'm sympathetic to the motivation behind this article, but I really do oppose it. I think it would make meetings much more cumbersome. I, I agree that meetings are the legislative record and that it's incumbent on all of us to stand up and make our case, reason with each other civilly and to respect disagreement where it's found. I certainly have voted in the minority on many issues in town, in town meeting in the five or six years that I've lived in Stowe. I think that, you know, the classic New England democracy, that Norman Rockwell painting, part of it is everybody standing, is people looking at the man of a very different background, very different interests perhaps, and respecting him. And it's really what we all should do, I think.
Mr. Saipler.
Dwight Saipler, 493 Great Road. I oppose this because I think it decreases the flexibility of how we handle the things at town meeting. It requires us to take a paper ballot if it's over $500,000. Now, as the FinCom said at the beginning of this night, a million dollars doesn't go as far as it did 20 years ago and 20 years from now, this $500,000 is going to be nothing. And at, at that time, we're going to have to take paper ballots on everything or we're going to have to modify this article frequently.
Next speaker, please.
John Haberly from Indian Ridge Road. Would this article preclude a quick vote to say we want a hand ballot? In other words, a, something comes up, $501,000 and it's, everybody just says, "I vote to have a hand ballot, could that be done?" Would this preclude us from having a hand ballot?
Mr. Robart, do you have an answer to that? I'm sorry, town council, I would, okay, thank you.
Could you speak in the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Complete sentences are useful sometimes.
The, good evening, Madam Moderator. Town meeting members, the, the article specifically says "shall require," so it would preclude any other means of, of taking a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Byron.
I'm Bill Byron and I am the least deal of the four people that would have been available to speak to this item. So here I am, taking your best shot. The group does not try to do things that are offensive. We try to pick causes that we see as being a problem in different areas of the town. We have heard that the criticisms of neighbor against neighbor about how they vote on, on different articles, we have heard that it has gone as far as the children in school saying that you did not, your folks did not vote a certain way and they should have because their parents said they should have. You may think as whatever you wish, but I'd like to know how you're going to force someone to be courteous, the people that are calling for everyone just being nice, nice folks. That, that would be fine. I'm not afraid to hold up my ballot card because maybe I don't have enough friends to be bothered with. But, but the fact is that there have been people screamed at, there have been phone calls made to persons about how they voted or did not vote. So we decided to try and alleviate that situation by proposing this article. We don't think that it's going to take up a whole lot more time. If it makes some people more comfortable voting here that are, are sensitive to someone making comments to them after they vote, then we feel it's worthwhile.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. Mr. Shepherd.
Tom Shepherd, 172 Harvard Road. I just want to say that the gentleman who spoke tonight to question a number of things in the financial package that we looked at, it displayed a great deal of, of personal courage and was certainly not, was certainly in the minority heavily. But, so I don't, I think that we have to accept the fact that there's a, any organization you belong to, there's a thrust to the organization, which you may or may not agree with, as this one, this one has its own thrust. Therefore, I oppose this. I think we have to have a meeting, which we do, feel free to express ourselves and we have to feel as though we're being listened to and if we're not, I'm sorry, that's, that's some of the human nature, but I do oppose this.
Next speaker, please.
Mary Redford, 21 Conant Drive. The previous speaker said, you know, "We can't legislate politeness." I wish we could. Guess I'm a high school teacher. I wish some of my students would be more polite. But it does come from home, I believe. It's not children who are rude, it's, they learn to be rude. They can also learn to be polite. I didn't grow up in this area, I grew up in the Midwest. You have a very special thing, we have a very special thing here in town meeting. It doesn't happen anywhere else. I am very much against this article because you would lose the transparency of government. You would lose the ability to know what it is that people are voting. I think it is important not to lay blame, but to understand that there are differences and that we respect them and we can't legislate it, but we can lead by example. So I would vote against this.
Next speaker, please.
Lisa DeLassio, Robert Road. I'm just curious if anybody could just speak to how this might be affected as far as more work or cost? Would this cost more? Would it, would it require more, more people to, to count or... Would it, would it require more, more people to, to count, or how would it be affected that way?
Linda Hathaway, our town clerk, could probably address that.
Usually when there is an article that is that $500,000 or more, we are probably going to be six or seven, eight hundred people. And yes, it would be a little bit more work as far as the ballot, a little bit more preparation as far as making sure that the ballot, how the process was now. As it has been indicated, we are, I am prepared right now, I have paper ballots, I have a check-in list. If somebody asks for a paper ballot right now, we would have to do a recheck or at least check to make sure that everybody had their voter card. Some people lose their voter card, some people pass them on to someone else, whatever. But to authenticate a vote, then we would do a recheck right now in this small number. If a large, in the past, when we've had some large, expecting a large turnout for very controversial items, the moderator and I have spoken, and we've started by having the handout, your card is actually a ballot sheet, pre-printed, and we have not had to use them in the three times I've done that. There are other alternatives and ways that we could do a paper ballot. I could use my electronic ballot machine from the, the voting. I'd want, would want one in each voting place, an overflow area. And that would require, right now, because we are only one precinct with one voting machine, I would have to borrow them from some other community. But it could be done. It would be more ballots, more cost. The computer chips are $250 each. So there is that cost. But I do want to diverge a little bit from Lisa's question, is that I can tell you from people who have been to the town meetings and voted, that they have been intimidated, that people have written letters to the editor about officials that have given the wrong information. And so this group is concerned, very concerned, that people's votes have been intimidated. And it's not just made up. It has happened. I have witnessed people standing at these tables, arguing and being rude to the town officials when those votes are made. And so I hear you out there saying that we should be polite. And I'm hoping that when we do get a controversial article, which will probably be in the fall when we vote the school, that we remember these conversations. Because we do need to be politer, we need to be more civil, because it has happened. You may not have experienced it, but it has happened. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Tom Ryan, 453 Great Road. It has been suggested to me that maybe we need a paper ballot to decide this. Just kidding.
Thank you.
You know, being the shrinking violet that I am over the years and not wanting to be involved in anything controversial, you know, I've never experienced being vilified. I'm kidding on that. But, you know, I've always been, I, I'm kind of torn on this whole issue because I take a lot of pride in being able to stand up here. But at the same time, I've seen some of the emails that have gone around beating the stuff out of me, as well as other people. And that does concern me. I'm more than willing to stand up here and take the heat because I've just come to expect it sometimes. But I've also watched other people, including spouses, you know, wife raises their hand, husband whacks her. Put that down. You know, it starts there, you know, and that's kind of to be expected. But I, I really, yeah, 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 I know, I'm digging a hole deeper. But I really appreciate what Ted Perry and Bill Byron and the others have tried to do, is bringing this up. Because if people were civil to each other and didn't write nasty emails and didn't beat the, try to beat the stuff out of people for having different viewpoints, then we could do exactly what we're doing here tonight. And I think the majority of the people here tonight hold the high ideals. But when we end up getting the other 600 people that try to stuff into this room, sometimes the dynamics tend to change a little. So it may be a good, it's, I think it's probably a good idea to mandate it so that things may stay a little more civil in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Sturgis.
I just want to say two things. One is, in terms of the concern that, that people should, that voters should be able to know what their elected officials think, I mean, really, all of the boards are always taking positions on most articles, and I think the voters deserve that and, and that you'd hear our position through that, that process that happens really before town meeting even starts. But I, I've been, if, if you've watched the, the town meeting video that Ed Newman put together a few years ago, I was a self-described town meeting junkie. I actually wrote my college thesis on town meeting, and I'm, I'm really committed to the institution. But what happens, particularly in the last few years, and it's not just Stowe, it's all over, is that participation is decreasing everywhere. And it's because people are busy, they don't have time, there's a lot of reasons why it's hard to keep this institution going. And I think anything we can do to make it easier for people to continue to participate is really important. It wasn't just those four guys that, that proposed this article. We've had a lot of discussion, I think all the boards that have been discussing this. You know, it started at a much lower amount. I was particularly concerned that if, as, as Mr. Saepler mentioned, you know, if we start too low, you know, it's not even a fire truck value. It's, you know, we're going to that police cruiser with the, the hybrid engine. So, you know, we needed to make it a higher amount so that it doesn't happen very often. And, you know, at best, it'd probably be one article per town meeting, maybe even one per year. But it's going to make it, in fact, a smoother process if we know in advance that we're going to have the paper ballot, the town clerk's that much more prepared. I think what, what happens if, if someone proposes to have a paper ballot, we have the same debate essentially about the article itself as we do about the paper ballot, because the people for the, the article are going to vote down the paper ballot. So it's not really a fair discussion. I mean, that's what's happened in the past when this has been asked to, to be considered. And I think we need to think about that seriously. It's only really big-ticket items. Maybe we need to add a CPI to the, the amount so we don't get stuck 15 years from now with, you know, an amount that doesn't buy much. But I think it's really important that we do anything we can at town meeting to encourage people's participation.
Next speaker, please.
John Haberly again. Again, I, I think that it would be very good, and I've heard excellent arguments on both sides, to have a paper ballot as a default. My issue with this is that there is no recourse to change it back to a hand ballot. If the wording were changed, that very likely would highly influence how I would vote. But at this point, I recommend voting against it because there is no recourse once you get over that amount. What I've heard is, is that you are precluded from even suggesting it. So if the wording were changed, that very likely would change how, my recommendation, but...
Next speaker, please.
My, one of my objections to this article is that it puts a price on democracy in our vote. And when you put a limit, you say, "Okay, anything under $500,000, I'm comfortable with people seeing how I vote. But anything over $500,000, I don't want people to see how I'm going to vote." And to me, that bothers me. And I think people should be comfortable with their votes regardless. And I'm also a high school teacher, and all this talk about people being upset about emails, maybe instead of this ballot, this question, we need a lesson in new etiquette in terms of the electronic media, which is what happens in high schools. And they have to teach people what not to put in emails and what not to put in Facebook. And if that's what's driving this, I think changing town meeting because people are getting their feelings hurt is really the wrong way to go.
Mr. Delica.
I have a point of, a point, just a point of clarification, no more comments on this. In the, would the current capital request article be considered under this? Because the sum of the, it's a single article that totals, say, more than 500K. Let's pretend it totaled more than 500K, I don't know whether this one did. Or, or is that, once you divide that article, does it then become 10 articles, each of which is subject to, to the 500K limit?
Town Council, do you have a response to that?
Good evening, Madam Moderator, Town meeting members. You know, my initial reaction is Article 34 is treated as one article with several subsets, but it's entirely possible that each of those articles could be over the capital amount, could be over $500,000. So I think, to answer the gentleman's question, I think each of the subsets of Article 34, if over $500,000, would trigger the requirement of the paper ballot, which is Article 54. So let me say that again. Article 34 today contains 10 articles, but it could contain 20 articles. For any of those articles over the $500,000 limit or $500,000 cap, it would be my opinion that that would require the use of a paper ballot. And that would be in addition to all of the articles under Article Five, which are, which is the original intent of this article, which is the general budget. Can't hear you. No, it's an excellent question. Selectman Robart's suggesting that if Article 34, the 10 articles that you voted on this evening, if collectively they were over $500,000, it would be, in my opinion, that that would not trigger the use of the paper ballot, because town meeting treats Article 34 and its subsets as individual articles. So I would, my opinion would be, Madam Moderator, that only if any of the subsets of Article 34 exceeded the $500,000, would that trigger the use or the requirements of the paper ballot.
Mr. Kupchinsky.
Mike Kupchinsky, 12 Canterbury Road. I appreciate the arguments on both sides of this issue, and I think that I would, at this point, vote against it just because I think we haven't thought it all the way through yet. And I think I would encourage the group to, and us as a, as a town, to look into this and maybe have a little bit more discussion about it outside of the town meeting and then bring it back at a, at a future meeting.
Next speaker, please.
Ms. Moderator, I'd like to call for a vote on this article. Okay, call the question. Okay, so that would stop the debate at this point, we go right to the vote on the article. So all, all in favor of call...
To call the question.
So we vote to call the question. So that's our vote right now, is to call the question. So all those in favor of calling the question and stopping debate at this point? All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. So all in favor of Article 54?
More information?
Yes.
Brian Burke, Birch Hill Road. What are the margins required for an amendment to the bylaws?
Majority. Okay, so all in favor, cards way up high? So there are a clear majority opposed to Article 54, so it fails. Article 55. Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Sections 5.4A.3, 5.4.6, and 5.4.9, to read in their entirety as stated in subsections A, B, and C of this article as printed in the warrant. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
Mr. Burnclow from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this warrant article.
Mr. Dodd from the Planning Board.
What we're proposing here is to update the Act of Adult Neighborhood bylaw. It was created before our inclusionary, inclusion of affordable housing bylaw, and what we're doing is bringing it up to date to agree with our most recent affordable housing requirements, that providing 10% across the board. No, no, no other provisions. So all we're doing is deleting all the requirements that the AAN had for affordable housing and referencing our inclusionary zoning bylaw.
The Planning Board is required to hold a public hearing on Article 55 as well as 56 and 57, which they did on March 17th at 7:30 PM. Are there any questions on Article 55? It does require the two-thirds vote, so all in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 56.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 1.3, 9.3.11.2, and 4.1.7, to read in their entirety as stated in subsections A, B, and C of this article as printed in the warrant. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the zoning bylaw.
Mr. Sarno from Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It's largely a clarification of the developable site area.
Mr. Quinn from the Planning Board.
Thank you. The proposed amendment is intended to clarify how developable site area applies to developments. Currently developable site area is defined but not referenced in the bylaw. Subsection A amends a definition by removing reference to slopes, which is addressed under the Erosion Control Section of the bylaw and Planning Board Rules and Regulations. Subsection B clarifies that developable site area applies to individual lots, and subsection C allows driveways, roads, and septic systems to be located outside the developable site
Seeing and hearing no questions or comments on Article 56, this does require the two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 56? All opposed? And that's unanimous. Article 57. Ms. Moderator, I move no action on Article 57. Is there a second? Ms. Willis, would you like to explain that?
Yes, Madam Moderator, thank you. The Planning Board has realized that there's some potential inconsistencies and would like some more time to review this before it's brought before town meeting, so we would move no action on this article.
All in favor of moving no action on Article 57? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 58.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer $74,000 from the town's interest on long-term debt account and $3,000 from the town's interest on temporary loans account to the town's FY 2009 snow and ice account.
Ms. Deludi from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Seeing and hearing no questions on Article 58, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Article 59.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to be added to the stabilization fund.
Ms. Deludi from Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this warrant article. This does require the two-thirds vote, all in favor of Article 59. All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 60.
I move that, uh, Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the following funds from the associated accounts to be added to the stabilization fund. Third floor workspace in town building, $979.67. Account number 02001019270798380000. Town building roof replacement, $19,000. Account number 0220210, I'm giving up on the zero, sorry. Police station air conditioning unit, $30. Account number 22022070785040000. Purchased pumper and rescue trucks, $576.49. Fire dispatch communications equipment, $295.05. And account number 2505107073560000. Conquered family youth service, $0.82, for a total of $20,882.3.
Mr. Walrath from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends in favor of this article. As stated in the warrant, these are leftover funds from previous projects. In particular, Craig Martin, our new building inspector deserves a lot of credit for the town, the town building roof coming in way under repairs, coming in way under the original budget, which is where $19,000 out of this, almost $21,000 came from. That, that's because we now have a, as was stated previously, if you were paying attention, Mr. Kupchinsky, we now have a town nurse, so we don't need those funds anymore. Those 82 cents, you know, would, 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 would get the, would get, they, they might get conquered family and youth services out of their driveway before the money ran out.
This does require the two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 60? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 61.
Ms. Moderator, I move no action on Article 61.
Second? All in favor?
Would you like to know why?
Well, you know, at this point, no. Not really. But go ahead.
Not so fast here. The reason is the budget is balanced.
All in favor of Article 61? Move vote, no action in 61.
Ms. Moderator, before we proceed, I have a comment to make. It's a tradition apparently on the Board of Selectmen that when there's a retiring selectman, that individual gets the honor, the high honor, of moving the last motion. So Ms. Farrell has kindly deferred to Jason Robart to conclude the festivities tonight.
Thank you.
And we're going to miss Jason, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Robart.
Very nice. Thank you all. That's, that's very kind of you. Madam Moderator, I move that the meeting be adjourned until the annual election on Tuesday, May 12th, 2009, commencing at 7:00 AM at the Hale Middle School Gymnasium in said town of Stowe, and then there to act on Article 62 for such election of officers and ballot questions as listed in the warrant, and thereafter at the close of the polls to dissolve this meeting.
All in favor of Article 62? All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 54. Thank you, sir.